Called this meeting to order the Asbury Park Planning Board. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this Board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence their device for the duration of this meeting. Just note this meeting is being recorded by APTV. Would you please join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the holy faith of God, in which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. This is our first in-person meeting day for the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Today is Monday, July 19th, 2021. And I will now take role Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Alma Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella and Bethson.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Trudy Fife, Dr. Beckton. Alexis Taylor.
Ms. Beckton.
Eric Galfo.
Here.
And Rick Lambert will be our chair.
Here.
For this evening, thank you. And Barbara Kuzak is the pastor today. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Take it away.
Okay, our first order of business are the minutes from the June 21st regular virtual meeting. Any comments or changes?
No.
Move to adopt.
Hey, I have a motion by Jim Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Rick Lambert. And we're going to mark those minutes into the record as Exhibit B1.
Okay, our next order of business is...
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? All right, minutes adopted.
Okay, our next order of business is resolution for 202 Seventh Avenue LLC and 202 204, I'm sorry, Block 4201, Lots 3 and 4.
Sorry, can you pull this up right now? But Jack, if you can, sorry if I'm wrong, one person is not eligible.
No, no.
I believe it's Eric. Is that Eric?
For what reason?
Let me look it up. I can't get my computer to cooperate. The resolution number 227.
We had some changes. Are there any changes that anybody wanted to make?
Yes, there was one change.
That's correct. I voted no on that application.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
And Ms. Clayton was not listed as one of the members eligible to vote and gone ahead and changed that.
Okay.
Okay, so those, that resolution will be marked into evidence as Exhibit B2.
So the changes did have to be made. The submission I made was incomplete.
I think so. I haven't heard back from anyone. I'm sorry, Mr. Henry, did you have...
I have a question.
Yeah.
On, excuse me, Item 16 on Page 4.
I don't know what it is.
It says, "All easements, including but not limited to the cross-easement for the shared driveway."
Yeah, that should, I think that should be omitted. I think that was omitted in the final draft. There wasn't a shared driveway. Yeah, the reason I put these items in red is to find out what the story was with them. Lighting restrictions, if there were any encroachments, I don't know that there are, and easements. So I don't believe there are any cross-easements involved. So 16 is going to be omitted from the final document. I would think that 15 is probably going to be omitted because I don't believe that there are any cross, any easements or encroachments into city roads. Is that correct, though? Did you know?
Uh...
That's fine. So 15 would be omitted, 16, number 17 is just in red, any other conditions, because there aren't any. And I think, other than that, I don't recall any lighting restrictions that were not made a part of the record with the revised plans, so I think 13 can be omitted.
I have one other question, Jack, if I may. Item number 8 on Page 2, which is the, it says the WRP requires yard equipment, including HVAC units, to be located in the rear. The applicant proposes to locate HVAC equipment on a roof.
What page?
Page 2. This is in Finding of Facts, at number 8.
Yeah, it's in red, correct?
He has a separate copy of that.
Yeah, it's in red, and that's why I had the question marks afterwards. Wasn't sure what the story was with that one either.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know that that is part of the requirements in the waterfront redevelopment. Because...
Essentially, it's being, they're being located on the roof.
Okay.
That's what...
I have no problem with that.
Jack, if I remember correctly, we asked them to put it on the roof.
That is correct.
I don't have a problem with that, but I...
We can strike out that first sentence that says that the WRP requires the units to be located in the rear yard. We'll just read, "The applicant proposes to locate the HVAC equipment on the roof." Wasn't sure if a design exception was required for that item.
Again, that might have just gotten completed, meaning that originally they were the side yard and the rear yard and the roof.
That's fine. So just make it a finding of fact that the applicant proposes to locate the HVAC equipment on the roof, period. And then you'd strike out the rest, and that would be an accurate finding of fact. So, other than that, it should be, with those additions or omissions, it should be ready to go. Move to approve is modified.
Second?
I have a motion by Jim Henry and a second by Rick Lambert. One more?
Yes.
Alma Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Eric Galfo is your two, and Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution adopted for 227th Avenue LLC.
Okay, we move on to our first application, which is 1401 Ocean Avenue LLC, Block 4204, Lot 1, WRA's, in the WRA zone. It's a new site plan application to add an observation deck, rooftop bar, event space with proposed restrooms on the existing rooftop of the Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is George McGill. I represent 1401 Ocean LLC, who's the applicant here tonight. We're here looking for site plan approval in reference to our application to have a rooftop bar at the Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel. We have achieved a subsequent redevelopment status in reference to this matter. We have Daniel Conde Torre with us tonight. He's our architect. And we have Albert Fax and Albi Manzo, representatives of the applicant. And we have North Dotty here, who is our acoustic expert. We've had a bit of a road on this matter because we were before the mayor council, and we had to work out to their satisfaction that the sound from the rooftop would not cause any adverse impact on the neighbors. And we did have Mr. Dotty prepare a report. That was peer reviewed by the city's acoustic engineer. And so they are, they comport with one another. So they're in agreement, and we did enter into an agreement. The subsequent developers agreement actually had Exhibit C, which put all the requirements for the sound into writing, and we agreed to all that. So I would like to start, if we could swear in everybody? Is that okay, Mr. Chisca?
I'll go one at a time, but first, we should acquire jurisdiction of your application. We did, I looked at the notices, they're in proper form. We have jurisdiction perceived.
Mr. Chisca. So if we're going to do it one at a time, I'd like to call Albert Fax. He's representative of the applicant. Albert, if you would come up.
And afterwards swear in, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to swear in my staff, in case there's any colloquy between them.
Sure.
The only reason I don't like to swear in all the witnesses is because then it kind of turns into a free fall. If we need to, we'll do it, but I'd rather go one at a time.
We'll go one at a time.
Okay. So please, we're just waiting. So I'm just waiting. Mr. Chandler, you've got to give him his time. You can choose the whole truth or not even about the truth. That's right. Please stand down. Please state your name for the record and spell it. Albert Fax, A-L-B-E-R-T. Last name is F-A-K-S. Thank you.
So Albert, what's your position with 1401 Ocean LLC?
Asset manager.
Yeah, they're going to speak up a little bit.
Asset manager.
Okay, and you're familiar with the Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel?
Yes.
And its design, right?
Yes.
And you're familiar with what we're proposing tonight?
Yes.
What is on the rooftop now in the area that we're proposing the rooftop on?
Currently, the rooftop needs an observation deck. It has pavers on it. We have an elevator that goes up to the roof. There is railing around the parapet that extends to height of the parapet, and there's a fence on the north side of the roof that blocks off the area that's an observation deck from the rest of the roof that's unusable.
So the hotel is kind of like an X, or it's four wings to it, right?
Yes.
And we're developing the southeast wing, correct?
Correct.
And that southeast wing is cut off from the other three wings, right?
Correct.
You can't get there from the south.
No.
Okay, all right. So presently, you have, what, chairs and tables?
Yeah, chairs, chairs and loungers are brought up for the observation deck when it's used. Whenever they're not in use, they're brought back and storage.
And you have plexiglass rimming perimeter?
Glass on top of the parapet.
Okay. So what is your vision for use of the rooftop area?
So we're proposing to have a bar up there that's mainly for hotel guests, but also open to the public. We hope to host some social gatherings up on the roof. We have hosted some wedding ceremonies there now, and we hope to do so as well in future.
And you hired...
Excuse me, Mr. McGill. Would you have a speaking to the mic? I'm having trouble. Thank you.
Okay. So you have hired Dan Conde Torre as your architect?
Yes.
And you went over the design with him, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So you are, you're going to have the public up there as well as guests?
Correct.
And one of the issues in the letter, or issue in the letter was regarding food. What's your plans for food up there?
So we don't plan on having a full restaurant up there. We have a one main kitchen in the hotel. We do plan on having serving, some light hors d'oeuvres or pass around up on the roof. It's not the main intention of the operation up there, but something that we would like, we would like to have.
So you're not, you're not running a restaurant, but you don't want to be precluded from serving food up there?
Correct.
If that would, that would probably go along with serving alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. So you were aware of the noise issue that the hotel was involved with its design and not?
Correct.
And you hired Mr. Dotty?
Yes.
And you realized that Mr. Dotty's work was looked at by good friends and associates, is that right?
Correct.
And from that, we entered into an agreement with the city as to how that's going to be handled, the noise level, how it's going to be checked, and certain things that you need to do. You're familiar with that, is that correct?
Correct.
And you plan to comply with that, right?
Correct.
And that's at all times, you understand that?
Correct.
All right, so it's at night, nor in the day, you have to comply with that, right?
Correct.
All right. How about the bar itself? It's going to be 12 persons, 12 horsemen?
Yes.
Okay, the rest of the area is going to be used by a total of, I think we have 150 people?
Correct.
Okay, we have plans that show 176 people. We've discussed that, right?
Yes.
And you're going to have Mr. Conde Torre change those plans to reflect 150?
Correct.
So how will you ensure that only 150 people are on the rooftop?
Yeah, so the building currently has three elevators, one of which go up to the main roof, to the roof. And what we're going to do is whenever the roof is open, that elevator is going to be strictly for the roof. All the other floors will be keyed off, and we will have two points of access control into the elevator, one at the lobby, counting how many people go in, one at the roof level, counting how many people go out. They'll have clickers, and they'll keep a tally of how many people are on the roof.
Okay. And your hours of operation, what do you intend at this time?
So I don't know what the hours of operation are going to be just yet. We will comply with all the municipal ordinances and rules.
I have no further questions for Mr. Fax.
Okay, does anyone on the board have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Just making sure.
You're talking about food service. You're talking about, you're not going to provide meals, just going to provide hors d'oeuvres, that type of food?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you've also said that you're going to have weddings and other special events. Are they, are you going to serve meals at the weddings?
So the idea is that the wedding ceremonies would be held up on the roof. The roof has a beautiful view, looking over Asbury. It looks south, south, over the town, and we have plenty of ballroom space in the hotel where the meals would be handled for a wedding. If there are social gatherings up there, we probably, you know, I don't want to preclude myself from serving food, but the main idea is pass arounds and hors d'oeuvres, not full-blown meals.
Okay, and what's your definition of a social gathering?
Private event, corporate event, small, a small pre-party to a wedding, things of that nature.
Okay. And you said you don't know your hours of operation. The Asbury Hotel has to cut their music off at 10 o'clock. How about the Berkeley? Will they be turning their music off at 10?
Well, I don't think we've actually looked at that, but we're kind of, you know, we're not kind of anything. We're restricted in what we can do to keep our music low. I think Mr. Dotty's going to talk about that.
Well, maybe, maybe this is not strictly the testimony that he has given, so maybe that question should wait. But with the noise problems that were generated by the Asbury Hotel when it was approved, the result was that the music cuts off at 10 o'clock.
You know, I understand that. We haven't thought about that, so, but I thought that we pretty much had the noise situation off with our agreement.
So just to give you a little bit about my background, I am a registered architect as a background. I don't practice. I'm registered in New York. When we designed the sound system along with Norm, the idea was not to have one loud source generating music and have high sound levels. The idea was it was going to be more background and low-level noise. So when Norm testifies, he will explain more about that. Instead of having one large or two large speakers, we have multiple smaller speakers. We've directed all the noise south, away from the adjoining properties to the north of us. When Daniel presents his presentation, he'll realize that the bar faces south, and there's a noise barrier behind the bar, and everything faces south. And they'll go more in detail and can answer your question better.
Well, all right. Thank you.
Yes, if we could revisit that area.
Sure. One of the other comments you made was that the, there's a wall between the southeast wing and the rest of the roof, so that there's no access to any other...
It's a fence. There's a, there's a fence with a, with a lock and a, and a, a door lock on it?
That's, that's not where the sound barrier is located?
No, that's, yeah, so there's a sound barrier between the southeast portion of the roof and the northeast portion of the roof?
Are you testifying to a site plan A1 that we could pull up for everybody to see?
Yeah, it would be better if Daniel went up.
It sounds like we're getting into the architecture and site plan, and I'm not sure he's the right person to answer these questions.
Right. And it almost sounds like he's testifying as to what's there now, and that's not, that's what's proposed, that's not there now.
Right, so...
Why don't we get the architect?
Do you anticipate any live entertainment, or just going to be piped-in music?
I think it'll be both, but when Norm testifies, he'll talk about how we're handling sound, whether it's live or something that's being played.
So just for the record, can you sort of put some brackets around the types of events that you imagine here? So I'm just going to ask, like, you say, a wedding. Fine, a ceremony.
Sure.
We're talking ceremony. You might have a dinner.
Sure.
Associated with that. Okay. Now, what about music concerts? How many people are, I know you're limited to a maximum. Is this a seated thing? What types of, you know, and how does the, when you're setting up for a concert, is it acoustic, or do they tap into your system and go around?
Yeah, so, so Norm designed the, everything goes into a program limiter.
Okay.
And anybody that wants to play has to use that limiter that's there. So nobody brings their own equipment, where they can turn it up or turn it down to what they want. That limiter has certain levels that it's set to, so nobody can play over that limit. And that's how the acoustics and the sound system was designed for the roof.
Okay. And so when you have these concerts and events, are they open to the public in the same way as others, or are some of them ticketed and some of them not?
Probably both. I can't answer that with certainty right now.
But you would control access in the same way?
Yeah. Access is always controlled, regardless of what type of event it is, by having somebody at the lobby level.
Right. If, I was just, the use of the word concert, we can't sell tickets, we can't advertise. It could be live entertainment.
Okay, great. No, I just want to know what's going to...
It could be a car or something, maybe a harp, that kind of thing.
It's just music in a, that accompanies an event. It's not performer A is performing at 7 o'clock at this time.
Right, it's not going to be an event.
It's not an event venue. Okay, good. This is, and then how do you, when you're, when you're doing a, I mean, I'm looking at architectural plans, but like, can you describe the operation of, you know, getting an event set up and like, the logistics of it? Because it's unclear where, like, where's your trash going during an event, what's happening, and the kind of, you know, orchestration of it?
If we could, we'll have Albi Manzo come up. He's the, he's charge of operations, so he's more hands-on in that.
Okay. Great.
Just one clarity for me. The access points are going to be manned by individuals?
Correct.
And that's whenever you're having an event on the rooftop. When you're having weddings, will you also have their cocktail hours on the rooftop?
Possibly.
Do you want to send any questions? Yeah, a point of clarification, Jim, I'm not sure, and I'm going to go to Yvonne or somebody who goes out dancing. I don't believe the Asbury shuts down their music at 10 o'clock. They do?
They do.
That's all, all of our other music venues cut off their music, their live music at 10.
Okay. Live music?
Live.
No, live music?
Live.
But not recorded?
Right, so the bar on top of the Asbury still plays music past 10 o'clock? Salvation. Salvation still plays music well past 10 o'clock?
But not live.
Not, not live. I totally agree.
Is that by ordinance?
It's by, yeah.
You have an ordinance.
But I don't know, I'm not going to say it's an ordinance by the...
Stone Pony.
The agreement with the hotel and the city.
The city has an ordinance that kicks in at 10 o'clock.
That's fine. I just wanted to get the source...
But that's just for live entertainment, not for recording music.
Baseds with the rule.
Right?
Okay. That's fine.
And we have a wrong cutting off live music at 10 as well.
As long as it doesn't interfere with the neighbors.
Right, right. I think we're, we're more strictly controlled than the ordinance actually requires, so we definitely have to meet that. We understand that.
Okay.
I have a question. Quick question.
Sorry.
At the times where events aren't happening, is that, is the access point to the roof normally locked, or is it open during the day? How does that all work?
So I don't think it'll be opened if there's, if there's nobody up there. It's either it's open and there's access control, or it's not open and there's no access control. And I think Albi will clarify.
Okay.
A little better.
Okay, thank you.
Well, so when a member of the pub, I guess I'm just trying to understand the public access portion. So I, somebody's just walking down the street and wants to go up to the roof, they can?
Correct.
As long as they're within the capacity limits?
Correct.
What are the, like, are you going to have a bar up there and they can buy alcohol?
Correct.
Okay. So, and that, that's fine, but it's, like, I guess, when is that allowed versus when the other stuff? What's the proportion of timing, or?
Yeah, so I think Albi will speak a little more to that. But I envision that when there isn't an event and there's certain hours, then it's open, otherwise it's, it's closed.
And there are two different accesses to the roof, one for the observation deck and the second for this entertainment space?
It's on the same space.
No, it's the same space. The observation deck is being converted into the bar.
So eliminating the observation deck, and it just becomes this open space for...
Correct, correct.
They're more, more like they're using the observation deck as the new space.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. They're not doing anything to the observation.
But they're still looking.
They're just drinking while they're observing.
Yeah, you have the option to watch while you're observing.
My kind of observation deck. Any more questions from the board or professionals? Any questions from the public?
Maybe I should wait for the sound part, or do you want me to switch it now?
Maybe you... Your questions have to be directly related to the witness's testimony.
Is specific what he testified to?
Yeah, and cross-examine his witness.
Maybe I'll wait for the sound guy to...
That's fine.
Okay.
The sound guy.
Any comments from the public?
No, 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 no comments.
No, not to the end, I'm sorry. Oh, you want to ask a question, please do. Sorry about that.
Ralph Mitchley, 1501 Ocean Avenue. Sir, now you have live music at the pool. Are you aware of that? There are occasions, like July 4th weekend, you had live music, in particular, a live DJ, who...
Hold on, hold on. Testify.
Well, my question becomes part of that.
Answer the first question. Are you aware, or are you aware, yes or no, that there was music at the pool?
I am not aware.
Okay, here's the answer to that question.
Okay, well, then you're probably not going to answer any of the other questions, which are, are you aware that when you have a live DJ, they are literally shouting over the microphone, over and above even the piped music that they're playing?
This is outside the scope of the testimony for the application that's before us. If you want to make a comment in general about their lack of respect for other people with noise, that you may get the end of the hearing during the public comment section.
Okay. Do you have anybody at the hotel on weekends, especially holiday weekends, that can take complaints of noise?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Um, I believe two years ago when I was here, I had personally given you my cell phone number and my email address to, to address any issues. I believe we met outside with two other people from your building.
We did.
Along with the ex-GM of the building and?
Well, that was the manager.
Yeah, the general manager.
It was the manager, yeah. But she never turns to the pool.
I know, but that's why I gave you my personal cell phone number and my email address, which I'm glad, which I'll gladly give you again.
Okay.
Hi, Ellen Muller, 1501 Ocean Avenue. How many nights a week do you anticipate that this will be open in?
Um, I don't, I don't know. Uh, Albi will, will discuss that more and often.
I think the next one is, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay.
Before we call the next witness, let's swear in our staff.
Okay.
If you raise your hand, you're someone who testified testimony about the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Douglas Clowen, board engineer.
Okay, and at this time, Irina, I would like to have marked in as an exhibit uh, the report from the planner, uh, that's dated July 14th, 2021. And then the report from our engineers that are dated July 6th, 2021.
Yes, for the planner's report from CC will be marked into it, given as Exhibit B3. And the engineers' report from inside engineering will be marked into evidence as Exhibit B4.
Before the end, at the end of the hearing, since we didn't take care of it upfront, I'd like you to just note for the record that we have switched from virtual meetings and Zoom meetings and that notice was in fact published in the appropriate places indicating that going forward pursuant to the landing.
Yes, thank you, John.
That's fine, we'll do that. We don't have to do it now, but do it when we leave. No, not your, not your notice. We have to amend our annual notice because we've switched from Zoom to personal and we have to be in compliance with the annual meeting.
I will know right now that, that the, uh, that notice was given for this special meeting to the Asbury Press and.
And also we amended the annual notice.
And the notice is, yes, not on the.
So that we're now going with live.
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Now, Irina. Um, okay, you wanna call your next witness?
I'd like to call Albi Manzo. Albi, your name's Daniel, I just wanted to.
Jack, you have a spare name?
Yes, please raise your hand, sir. You saw me swear a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay.
Please state your name for the record.
Uh, Albi Manzo, it's A-L-P-I-E, last name M-A-N-Z-O.
Albi, you're employed by the applicant, correct?
I am, yes.
And you, in your capacity, you provide operational services?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you heard the questions that were asked at the public house?
Yes.
So could you, um, advise the board how the, the rooftop would better function as you said?
Yeah, ultimately, there are a number of decisions that, you know, we're frankly in charge of making on the operational front. We are absolutely aware of the concerns that the town has. There are a number of things, I think, that logistically we need to get up in that space to help, add some context and color to exactly how it's gonna be operated. For instance, the hours are a really good example of that. The observation deck is not going anywhere. The addition of a bar to that space is really just going to add, um, just another element to obviously the operation. Take very seriously, you know, we really believe in, uh, what you guys are experiencing right now, right? You hear that? That's another, yeah. I feel like I've done a podcast long enough for like, have this down. Yep. Yeah, so that for example, right? That roof is extremely windy, so to do things like, let's say, full-blown live performance concerts, it's not exactly super compatible with that space. It's not something that we're looking to do intentionally up there. Also, um, frankly, the logistics of running a space like that make it increasingly difficult to do anything with a ton of food. Now, operating a bar or any other spot like that, when you have alcohol involved responsibly, it's good to have light finger foods, things like that, because it's just good business. It's just a way to kinda, you know, obviously keep people, you know, for lack of a better term, behaving themselves. Uh, we, we take very, very seriously also too the role that the hotel has within the city and there are some things that we wanna do to make the amenity of a rooftop observation deck available to the town to really take in what, you know, obviously, uh, everybody on the board feels is, is a great place to live. I mean, there are certain things we've looked at, like AR technology, for example, that'll help you look out into, uh, into Asbury and flip, like, almost kind of like a, on a viewfinder, hey, what did this look like in the 1850s, 1910s and 1920s? Really, really cool things that we've looked into like that. Um, there's nothing that we operate there that is meant or intended to be like a nightclub scenario and the roof will not be any different or exempt from, from our, uh, you know, our, our approach, um, like any of the other venues. I mean, we have a rule, I have a four-year-old niece, if she can't be comfortable up there, we don't, we don't do it. Um, so we'll attack that the same way up there.
So I, I think there were other questions, I can't remember them?
Yeah, there are quite a few. I, I don't know if you guys wanna go one by one on that, but sorry to be redundant, but I'm happy to answer anything you guys have.
Who wants to start? Go, Eric.
Oh, alright. So, the architectural floor plans, will you be testifying to those?
I will not, no.
Okay, that's more of my concern. Um, well, um, I don't really have that many questions because I wanna talk about the floor plan.
So, um, the hours of operation, so it's current, how, how, what are the hours currently for the observation deck? Is it open all day long?
So the way that I understand it with the hotel as it was run prior to us getting there, the observation deck, i- it's posted in the elevator on a sign that I've actually asked to get taken down until frankly we, we get to the, uh, get to a result here. I feel strongly that the observation deck in and of itself should be, you know, run during the day, allowing people to go up there. As a means of security, now, I'd like to get further clarification on the ticketing side of things, if that's prohibited, but as a means of security and honestly contact tracing, which we've seen, I'm a big fan of ticketed events, even if those tickets are free. Um, just so we have, you know, some data capture on who's going up there. Um, and it's just another mechanism or layer, uh, for us to kinda pay attention to who's going up. The way I look at it, you know, I, I don't necessarily wanna be held to the exact hours until we see how it quite literally functions, because again, you're talking about shutting down an elevator that's used for the guest itself, right? So, the observation deck itself, let's say if we operated that until six o'clock, uh, as a, it almost as if it was like Rockefeller Center or something like that, it, it, to give you a, a, a feel for how um, it's done in practice somewhere that's well-known. And then closing that off, when there is a private event, like any other space that we have, you couldn't do these two things in tandem. So if somebody wanted to have a, uh, wedding ceremony, for example, that's a very, you know, specified amount of time, we block that time off and we go from there. Beyond that, it would be open, you know, the, to the general public still, uh, whether, um, uh, they, they wanted to go up and have a drink or what have you. Frankly, you know, we don't wanna be precluded from how we can operate that, we know how our neighbors do it, but at the end of the day, for, for me, again, logistically speaking, the wind up there at night is a lot to contend with also. And the later it gets in the evening, the more people are relying on that elevator to get to their rooms. So I don't really anticipate having, um, what I, what gets me excited about operating that space, it's got a lot more to do with the daylight than anything else.
Well, that's my question. So, um, frequently, friends and I will go to the boardwalk and we'll walk down to the boardroom mark like at 12 or 1:00 in the afternoon and go up and, you know, have drinks. Would we be able to do it at the Berkeley? I mean, do you anticipate that? Like at noon, if I wanna go to the Berkeley and have a cocktail, like?
I hope so, yeah. Up there, yeah. I mean, to be honest with you, it's probably the best time to go, I would think, for, for that. I mean, with a lot of what we wanna do, I just feel that that's probably the best time to have that operating, but again, there are places that we've opened there that I thought would be just absolutely jam-packed all the time, crazy. And for whatever reason, didn't necessarily click with the audience. You always wanna take a moment to kind of observe, hey, how are people reacting to this and how is it affecting other elements of our business? If we're running something until two o'clock in the morning and that doesn't help the guest experience, that's not exactly advantageous to us, because you're still dealing with 150 people. So by making 150 people happy, is it gonna make 500 that are staying at the hotel upset? That doesn't necessarily work for me. There's, everything has to, you know, i- it's, it's a big puzzle.
So what would be the, at what point would you decide you need to start monitoring who goes up and down into that? Cause it's a, you know, beautiful weekend, there's a lot of people out and you have people going up and down and getting drinks, like, how would you know when to kinda start regulating?
Well, by, by regulation of access, you mean the amount of people that physically go outside or how, as explained before with the names and everything like that?
Well, how would you, you know, you said you, you have someone in the lobby and someone at the top, at what point do you start saying, oh, you have a lot of people up there, maybe we should start monitoring?
Uh, it would be from day one. I mean, that wouldn't be something that we would wait for. The, how far you go with it also depends very much on your run of show, so to speak, right? So by operating that as, you know, operating the observation deck in the way that frankly would be something that personally I know our group would be proud of, would be done in a way where a lot of those steps are taken for you. Kind of like in our reservation system, you know, going from there. If we find that it's becoming more and more attractive for people to go up there and drink, there are a million different things that we take into account when you're running that style of venue. No matter what, you're gonna have security in place upstairs. No matter what, it'll be more than one body. I'm probably the most paranoid person in Asbury Park. So these are things that I insist on having in place, no matter what floor it's on. That being said, it's, it's, uh, you know, not something that we would wait and see if we needed. That would be an immediate, you know, as we, as we open those, those, uh, steps would be in place.
Important question, how many bartenders are you gonna have?
You'll be fine.
It's a way longer.
No, you'll be just fine.
Okay.
I mean, look, you know, to be honest with you, the biggest, one of the biggest issues for this right now is frankly the current staffing environment. I mean, if, unfortunately, if it was gonna be open tomorrow, I probably couldn't do it, you know, so. Unless you guys are looking for side work, in which case, I mean, bar card up, it's in this building, so.
So what's the capacity of the elevator carrying people up and down? Like, how many people can you get in per shot?
Uh, it's a weight capacity, I mean, uh, 2,500 pounds?
So four.
So, I mean, basically, but what you would have in that, it, when we're running it as, trying to see a, an example, right, the Gansford Hotel does it this way. Where you'll have, um, some of the W's do it this way also. You'll have basically a barrier, almost like a check-in desk like anything else. You'll have a ra, he'll have a radio, I'm setting party of six up, party of four up, whatever it is. You never wanna overwhelm those people, so, um, you know, i- it's not gonna be like, hey, we've got 30 something people coming up the elevator.
What I'm getting at is I'm just trying to figure out how many elevator cars it would take to turn over or get people down? Cause I'm assuming you mostly don't want people using the egress stair? That is, there, there is an egress stair, I don't know.
Well, but what you're getting at is a really important point, right? So for the logistics of running this space, it makes it really, really, really hard to do anything rowdy up there. Just, it's not built for it. And frankly, y- you have to understand too, to your point with the bartenders, right?
You're underestimating the rowdy crowd.
When you have, you know, one means of, of going up and down and there's, you know, i- it makes it very difficult for us also to, let's say, get more ice up there, type of a thing, you know? So you wanna control this for a means of really just providing a service that we can be proud of and not one that's gonna turn people off. I don't want you waiting half an hour for a drink. Just doesn't work for us, so.
So you don't have a service elevator going up to the roof?
We do, but the problem with the service elevator, like everything else, is now you're turning one elevator off to go direct up to the, oh, up to the roof in the main lobby, right? The other two can still service the hotel. That service elevator is still acting as a service elevator for the entire property. So if we take that away, it's really no different than, I, when I stay at the Berkeley, I insist on staying at one of the floors where I can walk down, because in the morning, when I have to get downstairs for breakfast service or whatever, it's, it's just, you never had a traffic jam like a bunch of housekeepers trying to get to the floors to turn over rooms.
Does the service elevator go all the way to the roof?
But you're asking if the service elevator is used for service of the roof?
Well, I'm also saying, um, if you're having a food service on the roof, are they using the passenger elevator, the service elevator?
So, yeah, they would use the service elevator, obviously, but I'm talking if like a manager or a security guard, something has to go up from there. These are, you know, it, it's all kind of the same.
So it's a total of four elevators, one service and three passenger?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions? Doug?
So, for example, in, you know, an event's not happening, it's, it's the middle of the night, is access to that roof open or is it locked? Can someone get up there like un, unattended or not watched, or is there always somebody there to watch people that are up there?
No, the idea is that it would be next, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want anybody up there without having eyeballs on them. You know, it's just, you know, the policy I would like to see. So, yeah, that would be locked if we don't have staffing up there.
Guests in the hotel, does your key card let you go?
But, well, no, we can turn that off, no. It does not let you go up there. Well, yeah, there's an actual physical key that when, if you tried that today, right now, and let's say you were staying on the eighth floor and you went there and you hit, you know, the roof access point, it wouldn't light up. It's quite literally a key that I have to hold to the side and then hold the button down to bring me up there.
Every time I come to the roof, I needed someone to take me because of the key access, right?
Yeah, we would leave that in place. And still, even, you know, as the observation deck, that would still, you know, in one way or another remain in place.
So do you anticipate ultimately, your goal is to have it just a functioning bar that any night of the week, you could go up there and have a cocktail and be open till one or two?
I mean, look, in an ideal situation, we'd have everything open every day and it was all making money. I mean, if we are in a situation where that for whatever reason, I, I do think that would add another layer of enjoyment to the space, you know, it's just kinda, it goes without saying that obviously we wanna see that happen, right? That being said, it's not like, i- it's the view that I think brings them in, there are some things that we're looking to do up there. Like I mentioned before, you know, we did this with our lobby, we just recently opened a pop-up museum in the lobby. There's, we're big believers in taking every space that we have and creating excitement around it in one way or the other. It doesn't always involve drinking. I mean, for us to put yoga class up there, for example, you know, i- it's something that we've, uh, that we've kind of internally kicked around, like one of those things. It, it's supposed to be a transformative place. It's not always, you know, transformative by way of vodka. You know, there are things that we can do without having that. You know, so opening earlier for something like that could obviously work, but always the thing for us, um, just from a liability standpoint, there's going to be hotel representation on that roof.
What are your hours, excuse me, what are your anticipated hours of operation of that bar? And how many days a week?
I mean, right now, um, our most popular venues right now really are only open four nights a week. You know, i- i- we adjust to the demand. Like, if we felt that the business was, you know, if the demand for a spot called for seven days a week operation, we would adjust to seven day a week operation. You see that at the pool. I, for the intended amount of time, the reason that, this is not an answer that, that in any way should indicate that we're not prepared for this. It's much more a function of, hey, realistically, can we get the staff to open a place for X amount of time? Now, we've got enough staff right now to keep spots open, but frankly, we care about our staff. I'm not trying to run them down or push them into overtime or not have them spend time with their families, cause, you know, it's a, it's a difficult time to, to bring in more bodies. And also people that we, we feel fit the culture that we're trying to create there and, and, and provide a level of service that we're proud of. You know, in the event that we can open it seven days a week, then, you know, and that's, as lo, as long as it's acceptable and within, we're, we're gonna operate within the confines of, you know, the ordinance that are, ordinances that are put in front of us regardless of the situation, so.
And what are your anticipated hours of operation?
And, and, again, if I had to anticipate it, I would say that I would probably operate that space from noon to 10:00 PM, if I had to call it right now. The reason I'm saying that is frankly, one of the major concerns that I have in operations, and I wanna be stuck or held to this, this is just a hypothetical question that I'm answering. The reason I'm answering it this way is because frankly, I don't wanna cause a disruption to our hotel guests by shutting down one of the elevators, number one. I'm gonna make sure that this is something that works for everybody. And I wanna make sure that, you know, up there to, I, I've been up there later on at night, it's a, it's, it's not the easiest place in the world to operate from. If all the conditions aren't necessarily perfect, so, you know, that, that's what I'd probably anticipate doing, but I don't wanna be precluded from operating the same way that the Asbury does.
In, in addition to operating the bar, what other activities do you anticipate? In in addition to operating the bar, what other activities do you anticipate up there?
Special events like we mentioned, you know, and obviously the observation.
Give me an idea of what what those special events are.
Wedding ceremony, you can have, you know, there might be religious ceremonies that happen up there. There might be corporate events that happen up there. I mean, you kind of, you know, those are the type of things that define you, but is there anything in particular that maybe there's a concern about that you want me to clarify that that won't be happening up there?
Here's here's my problem with your testimony. I'm trying to figure out what it is that you were really gonna do up there. And I understand what you're saying, that at this point, you're having difficulty with giving that answer because you do not know, but you're asking us to approve something based on what you don't know. So if you don't know, how are we supposed to know and how how can we make a rational judgment?
Well, we know perfectly what we want to do. It's just a matter of, I mean, I don't I don't want to say, I don't want to mislead you guys and say, hey, starting tomorrow, we're gonna be open at two o'clock in the morning. If I, you know, this is obviously testimony that people are paying attention to, okay? And this is something that whether it's people that are for or against this, I don't want to get people excited or disappointed by what we are are not able to do as far as how we want to run it.
We're not here to approve the use. The use is permitted. We wouldn't be here. You're asking for what types of operation, but we're not here to approve that you can use it for this. Well, that's already been taken care of through the T R C and the request is to use it.
When we do approve, I recall in previous applications that we set limits on certain aspects of the functionality of it.
That depends if there's an ordinance that's uniformally enforced throughout the city. That's why I asked my question.
Could we ask you a question, Jack? Going, excuse me, going back to the waterfront redevelopment plan, isn't Berkeley an exception?
No.
Are you sure? I think.
It's a principally permitted use within the zone.
I think if you if you check the waterfront redevelopment plan, you'll see that that is an exception to, Berkeley is an exception to the waterfront redevelopment plan and it's not covered by the same rules or regulations. It's called, it's covered by the base zoning in that area up there.
And the base, even if you go in that direction, it still isn't permitted to use.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. What is, what is he, what are they proposing? That's that's basically the question I ask. What what are these special events? What what do they entail?
Any special, anything that can be, I don't want to speak for the gentleman, but any any function.
Associated with the hotel, right?
With the hotel or associated with an outside group wanting to, a corporate group wants to have their annual meeting at the hotel and they want to have a hotel party upstairs. That's a special event.
That's what I'm trying to, what I'm, I want to see what they think a special event is as to what I think it is. I mean, that's what I'm trying to, I'm driving.
Does it matter? I mean, I'm not being, sorry, I mean.
No, I know, under the ordinance, it doesn't. There's nothing defining, there's nothing defining it that says it has to be, that certainly can't have a concert venue up there. That's not certain.
Okay, so then the use, the bar is the use that we're talking about?
Well, the bar and related uses. It can be other uses.
So like hours of operation and days of operation, is that an issue that we should concern ourselves with?
Particularly because those are governed by municipal ordinance.
Okay, that's what I'm trying, because I feel like we're asking lots of questions that really are may not.
Those are governed by municipal ordinance.
So you, so we're we're approving, we're not approving the use, we're just approving the design of the.
We're approving a minor site plan.
Right.
Not a use variance application.
That's what I'm trying to clear, clear up, so we're not going round and round with questions that really are irrelevant to our, what we're.
This is a minor site plan application with no bolt variances and no design.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Jimmy, you finish? Where are you going to store your refuse from the roof? Is it gonna remain on the roof or are you gonna be moving it down to the basement until it's picked up?
Anything would be removed, like any of our other venues, we don't leave any waste material behind. We bring them downstairs. There would be nothing left up there.
Any more questions from the board? Don't ask our professionals.
So can you just clarify that, you know, one of the T R C recommendations was for windproof refuse? So are you gonna have cans in various locations throughout the space or is it just gonna be concentrated up by the bar? How how is that gonna actually work?
We would spread them out, just as a means of, I mean, something we do normally at any other spot. Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not unfamiliar with with this. I mean, we have this, the problem, you know, we deal with wind at the pool on a regular basis, so.
Well, the wind condition, which you just, the roof is more severe than at ground level, so, you know.
Well, what I'm actually hoping to, and and one of the things I've actually spoken to with architects is, you know, that this sound barrier would actually provide some some limitations to the wind as well. That being said, it's still something that we would take seriously. I mean, we are not necessarily big on making a habit of leaving, you know, waste material behind anywhere. So, you know, we're obviously on top of, you know, busting our tables and stuff like that, but, you know, there's gonna be more than enough space for obviously customers to handle that themselves and we'll use heavier items up there to make sure that they're not subject to, to, like, you're not using a paper napkin, for example, you're using cloth. These are the types of things that we might might consider up there.
Does the, does the current refuse and recycling area that you have within the hotel, does it have the capacity to handle, because this is probably an increase in demand, does it have the capacity to handle such demand?
To be honest with you, I don't look at it so much as an increase in demand. Obviously, it's an increase in capacity of what happens up there, but we have events that, you know, for example, you could have the entire second floor event space being used on a Saturday and it's not on a Sunday, for example, right? That amount of people, it quite handedly takes on that amount of waste material without an issue. So on a day to day with with this, and again, this goes to looking at the operations, we look at everything as a whole. So we might, for example, close a certain space off to the public if we feel that we've got a ton of activity in the building and it can't handle, you know, even just kind of like the logistical flow of people walking in and out of common spaces, but it's never really a problem with waste. I've I've never had an issue up there with with the amount of, you know, waste being done after a party or something, you know, since I've been there.
Any other questions?
Is there someone that's going to address light spillage?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Montal, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any questions from the public?
Sorry, I don't wanna step on the public if there's public.
And in the in the planners report, there's a couple of things here about like planting of the roof and it's just like, I know that you're planning on putting planters around. Do you current, how do you currently clean the glass panels on the roof? Like, what's what's your maintenance procedure and is that, how is that gonna work once there's planters up against the edge?
I know Daniel, I believe Daniel's talking about the planters. I mean, how we clean the glass up on the roof now is, is, you know, we treat it like any other glass surface that we have there. It's not necessarily a a place that gets heavily used at the moment, so it's not.
Oh, it's, I'm just more concerned about the age and wearing of it, but than the appearance of it from the outside.
So how about, I'm sorry. What about umbrellas or shady structures, heaters, anything like that that have used?
It's by understanding the only permanent structure would be the one that's been proposed over the bar. You know, I believe temporary structure. I think before we got there, I know there's wind sails, I believe they were used in the past.
Sun sails.
Sun sails, well, not wind sails, sun sails.
Those are fixed to the poles at the outer edge?
Yeah, I personally, I've never worked with them. I know that was there before.
Albert, you're not gonna use umbrellas, right?
No, absolutely not.
Or tents?
No. No, I mean, to some type of, you know, the the sun sail, as it was described to me, the temporary sun sail seemed like a pretty good idea. And I think there's probably a number of different reasons that you guys looking into this plan would probably want to see those for noise and light reduction reasons. But, you know, we're obviously going to abide by whatever.
It just seems like it's a very hot space without any kind of cover.
I mean, I think it would be smart, yeah, I mean, to have something up there, but and and those are pretty easy to work with. I think that would be the no brainer. And they'll probably add some additional layers of light and sound mitigation for you guys, also, I would assume. Yeah, I'm sure, ready to discuss that.
Will the bar be covered?
Yeah, there's a, that's in the plan.
So the only thing I'm gonna suggest is that it kind of shades, you usually have the leaves, you know, a little bit of kind of wide open space so that it gets the right angle. And so it's just, you know, view from the boardwalk looking at the roof of the Berkeley, it might look, it's going to just be, you know, different than the style of the architecture, you know, it will have a visual effect, so.
Yes.
And maybe not a big deal.
Observable from the street level.
It will?
Well, it'll have to be because you have to get it pretty high. Cover everything.
Parts, parts of it might, it might not be visible unless you're standing far away from it.
And they also get taken down. They wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily be up there, you know, twenty-four hours a day, something that gets taken.
I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing.
No, no, I I agree.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad thing. I think they're actually quite nice. Okay, thank you.
But we don't, we're not here to prove that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have a question? Oh, please, please come up.
Hi, Maggie Quentin, North Beach. So if you are having an event and it's raining, you will put a tent up there for your guests?
Uh, no, but the way that we have it actually set up now is we have backup spaces reserved for all of our guests in the event of a wedding ceremony, right? That will actually have reserved downstairs, so the event of rain actually goes inside. And I'm familiar with the, yeah, any of the, if anybody had any operational questions with the sound and stuff now, I mean, which I can address, but.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Montal. Please call your next wiz.
Thank you. I'd like to call Dan Condatore, please.
This someone's heard a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth.
I do.
Daniel Condatore, C O N D A T O R E.
Sorry for putting that E on the end, Dan. Always do that. Dan, could you just give the board the benefit of the qualifications?
Sure. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been registered since two thousand eight. My office is located on Lake Ave in Asbury Park and I presented in front of this board on several occasions.
I'd offer Mr. Condatore as an expert.
Thank you.
Thank you. In architecture.
Just architecture.
Dan, you prepared the plans in this matter, right?
Yes, I did.
All right, so without me having to ask you a hundred questions, you can take the board through it?
Sure. I would like to just, just maybe it might help out if we pull up this image to kind of familiarize yourself.
Excuse me just a minute. Irene, can we get on the screen too?
Is there a button on the side I can press? No, it's just a Google image.
Um, is this a, this is not part of their packet, correct?
No, it's not part of the packet. It was just a general Google image. Okay, so I I just wanted to put this picture up here quickly, because it's like it's easier to see it in real life than it is to look at plans. And this is the existing condition of where that observation deck is. So what we're doing on our proposed plan is to work with the existing extent of that paper area. So we're not, it's not growing, it's not changing, it's not being modified. That is the the paved area. And then wherever that paved area is along the perimeter, you can see I move my hand around the perimeter, is where we have the existing parapet, which is four feet tall, and then on top of that, we have the the glass that's existing from when they added this to give a total height of five foot six from the roof to the top of the of the glass. So that's pretty important. Here is the main access point here that exists today, where you come out the elevator and then there's an existing stair and ADA ramp that was added to the project. And then what Albert was talking about earlier, which I don't think was clear, on this backside of this ramp is an existing gate and fence area that precludes anybody from going beyond into this, okay? And then on this side, there's an existing gate, but we're absolutely gonna change that into something more substantial, which I'll I'll show on the floor plans. This box that was added at some point is an existing storage room, which will be converting to the bathrooms you'll see in the floor plan. And then this box structure here with a gray roof is the existing egress stair. There are two egress stairs. One was added when they did the roof and that's on the backside, on the north side of the roof. And there's a striped walk area that takes you from the existing paved area to that, to that stair. And I'll, we'll talk about the control measures of of that and how that works in the end. When we pull up the plans, you'll see that we're adding the twelve-seat bar area. So that bar area is really, if you take the height of this roof, which is ten foot, we're extending out that roof out to the east towards the ocean and building the bar in this area. So you can see it's still substantially set back from perimeter. I mean, if you walk around the property now, you can't even, you can't see those structures as they exist. So there we, there's no anticipation that you would actually even see the bar from the street. So we feel that it's not a negative impact to the architecture of the building and it works well with that location. There's some plumbing within that wall that's below us that we can tap into the, so we have sewer, power and water all in this location. So it's an easy fix for us to do that. And then this is the general area. We will, you'll see that we've added the seating and and things of that nature. So from there, I will now go to our proposed plans, which you have. So this is the general site plan. As I said, as I already described, this is just in plan form, but there's really not much change to what is is there existing. Here's that proposed bar area and this is a proposed location where we're putting the eight-foot sound slash screen wall to protect, you know, the view and the noise and the light from the residential areas to the north. So really, the way this observation fits out existing before we even became part of the project, I can't take credit for it, it's really in the best location for, because it's on that southeast corner, which kind of faces the activity of the boardwalk and the ocean and between the the turret where the elevator shaft is, that large mass and this screen wall, everything kind of deflects away, away from that area to the east, away from the residential zones of Asbury Park. This is just in a large floor plan that shows you the the new bathroom area that we're creating, the four stalls, the sink. And then we have a storage area where we can temporarily store seating and and things like that that we would need up there. And then here we have our, just a back bar area and then the main bar seating.
It's a unisex bathroom?
We have a unisex bathroom, yes, yes. And so we have an ADA bathroom here, but then we also, there's additional bath, public bathrooms within the hotel, so this is not meant to, you know, take care of everything. It's most, take care of most of the time, but if there's, you know, a lot of activity, there is additional bathrooms at the lobby level that you can, like we were talking about with the direct access with the elevator, someone can go directly down to that, those those levels. But it was important that we provide an ADA bathroom on the roof. You want to ask a question now?
I can ask, Jack, but like room layout is not in our, like, can we talk about the room layout? Because it seems like you need a, right? It's just not, it seems like you need one single-use restroom. It doesn't matter if you need a single door to a one restroom, at least one.
Just nothing in the code that requires it. What we, what we felt was that if we were to produce two single occupants, like, if we were to make two ADA bathrooms. What we, what we felt was that if we were to produce two single occupants, like, if we were to make two ADA bathrooms, if you create a bathroom, it has to be ADA, right? A brand-new bathroom, okay? So if we were doing men's and women's, we would only be able to get two stalls up here, as opposed to doing this and getting four. Now, it still complies with all ADA regulations, and we're able to get two additional stalls. That was our intent.
Seems a little odd. I don't want to pee next to my grandmother at the wedding.
Well, they're, these are, these are not, these are not stall. Just so, yeah, they're little rooms. They're not stalls. They're full-height walls with doors.
That's what wasn't clear.
Yeah, yeah, so just be clear. You're not walking into one bathroom. You have a common sink area, but each individual, uh, toilet is a, is a room, so. So, uh, and then this is just a, a, a general layout and large plan showing, um, you know, the loose, I mean, this is a typical loose tables and chairs. This can be arranged many ways. We're not saying this is the way it has to be. Uh, and elevations of the bar, the seating area will have a back bar. Um, we have the detail of, uh, the sound wall system that goes across and then down over here along that edge. And then, uh, these are, um, prefabricated. They're fiberglass, uh, planter boxes. You know, a, a part of the communication during the TRC, we're talking about green roofs and things of that nature. Um, really what we're, we're trying to do is create a buffer, right, with, with some plantings. And, you know, green roof necessarily doesn't allow you to grow taller shrubs and bushes and grasses and things like that. So we felt it was better, um, to provide the planter boxes. And obviously, um, for the other question, if we had to space them out and move them a little bit differently, so you can get behind them to clean the glass and things like that, we can, we can set those as we need to. But we just felt that the planter box would be a, a, a better use, uh, to get some taller and more sturdy shrubs and things up there on the roof.
The TRC recommendation, however, was also for green roofing on the portion not to be used.
Yeah, I, I don't remember that specifically. I don't, I, we never proposed that, so I don't know how that came about.
You did not propose that.
It was.
Yeah, but I'm not sure how it came about, because I don't recall it.
Yeah, I, that, that, that was not, um, that was not proposed effective.
It says in the planners report, the applicant agreed to creating.
Would it be, could you talk about, uh, on the others? I mean, I can't test.
And they're, they're planters. They're not, it's not green roof. They're, they're just stormwater mechanisms.
Right.
Yes.
These are not a stormwater mechanism.
No, I understand that. I'm not, I'm just asking about it because it was mentioned.
And that would go into a lot more structural issues. I mean, it's, it's more of a demand than it is actually having it being occupied.
Right, it might be nice if you had planters sort of on some portion of the other side, but, you know.
It's gonna be tricky, though. I mean, it's salt, it's wind, it's intense, so.
There's grasses.
And also would invite people over there, which I don't think we want to do. I mean, that was a consideration.
Contro-. Gate or something.
Yes.
We also don't, yeah, we don't want to block the views at the same time.
And so will your planters, what's the, how are you gonna ensure that the planters you have stay alive? What measures are being taken?
Well, we'll work with, uh, uh, you know, a landscape architect during the, the permitting phase to pick, you know, drought tolerant, sturdy shrubs and grasses that would go in there. Uh, these are, you know, they have these, these engineered, uh, planter boxes that have, you know, the reservoir on the bottom, so the water does not sit in the bottom and dry the, the roots out and, and kill them that way. So there's different measures, and then, um, you know, there's, there's just water up there on the roof, obviously for the bathroom, so they'll be irrigated manually, uh, by the staff, so it'll be a part of their own maintenance plan. And this plan here is our lighting plan. So you want to ask a question back? Sure.
Um, well, before you move on to lighting, I feel like we want to talk about, um, the recommendation to contact the state's historic preservation office, SHPO. Was there any attempts to do that?
That is a question for George.
I, um, I'm looking at my, uh, TRC, and it said that it was suggested that we contact the state historic preservation office. And, you know, I, I just took that to look up whether they had jurisdiction, and they didn't have jurisdiction over this. So I, I didn't put in any kind of contact.
So is the property, is the property listed on?
It's subject to an opinion, but it's not listed on either the, uh, federal or the state register. But it's subject to an opinion in 1980 that it would be eligible. But, um, it's not on the register. Um, you know, the other thing that we were looking at is the, um, I guess the minimal profile or, you know, the architectural, um, change to the, the top is, I don't know if it even exists.
This is in direct contradiction. What you're saying now, though, is in direct contradiction with what appears in our planning report, which says that it's listed on the New Jersey Register of Historic Places for Architectural and Historical Significance. Which means that before you can do anything there, doesn't SHPO get a whack at the apple?
No, I, actually under SHPO, the, the only, SHPO is very narrow jurisdiction. It only deals with state, county, and local projects. It doesn't deal with projects that are, uh, subject or, uh, private-funded. So they really don't have any jurisdiction here. And I don't, I don't think that, um, it's really in contradiction.
No, no, but you're saying it's not registered, and our report says it is.
Okay, it's, it's not, um, it's subject to an opinion. And, um, I actually have that document. It's, so technically, it, it's listed in, in mom county listings, but it's not on the, um, federal register or the state register. Um, but it's, is listed as subject to an opinion. So I could give that to you if you'd like to see that. So that, that's what I'm talking about. So I don't know if there's much of a difference on that, but it, there's no difference as far as the jurisdiction is concerned. Because, uh, we don't have to make an application. Now, that being said, um, when I looked at that, you know, it didn't say that, um, we had to get SHPO's recommendations. That, that's, when you look at the TRC letter, that, that's, that's what it says. And, you know, and I saw, um, Ms. Miller's letter, I, I looked at it, and I said, you know, what, what's, what's all that about? And I actually looked at my copy of, uh, the TRC, and it says not subject to, um, to their jurisdiction. So that's as far as I took it. I didn't want to make an application to, to, to SHPO that wasn't warranted.
Of course.
And, um, so of course.
We just need to clarify. Right? Like, is it or is it not listed? Because we have two different.
So it's not, I'm, I'm on the, um, state's.
Database.
It's called Lucy. Uh, so, and I'm actually, put it on, it's microscopic text. So it's not a national register property. It is a, let's see, so October 21st, 1981. Okay, so it's, at the state level, it is a state, it is an individual.
An individual number? Eligible.
And it's on the county's list and the city's list. It is, you know, HPU service, survey database. And it's just a.
The county and the city, I mean, you don't have a preservation organization here, so county doesn't have any jurisdiction over any kind of design changes.
Well, so in the master plan, we have designated, um, you identify historic properties as part of the historic preservation offices, and so it's on there.
Right, but we've never said.
And it's just that county has identified historic properties.
But the city hasn't adopted any kind of a commission.
But it's not the same level of protection as a state registered or a national registered property.
Right. Okay.
So I guess, I, I, that might as well go over CAFRA as well. I, I did have a conversation with CAFRA through email, and, uh, because we're not putting a new roof, uh, or a new floor on, not a new roof, but we're not adding a floor, um, that we don't have. We're not subject to, uh, having to get a CAFRA permit. The, the original CAFRA permit covers the entire waterfront development. And, uh, the DEP, um, sent me an email saying that we don't need to get CAFRA approval on that, and I did send that over to Mr. Cleland.
Oh, you sent it to Doug?
Yeah, mhm. I sent it to Doug. Doug?
Mm-hmm.
Good?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to continue?
Okay. Yeah, just while I was, uh, listening to that, I also wanted to just go back. I know there was a comment in Donna's letter about the overhang itself and the extent of it. And, um, there is a little bit of discrepancy where on the dimension of the overhang, the, the roof over the bar will cover the, the seating area, not just the bar.
It will project.
It will project further. It's actually, this dimension's in the wrong spot. It actually comes out to here. It's 10 feet. Just, uh, to, to clarify that. And that's outlined. You can see the outline of it here, uh, on the plan.
Right. So. Will it sit clear height under it?
It'll be nine feet.
Is it cantilevered?
No, there'll be posts. But, so eventually, you know, for specific anchor points, we will bring a structural engineer on, on board. Uh, right now, we have an existing structural engineer letter from when they did this that kind of limited the 150 occupants. Uh, what we're doing, uh, we feel is not really increasing the overall, uh, load per square foot, but we do have some point loads that we need to address based on, you know, columns attaching to structure and anchoring the, uh, the screen wall. So that, that'll happen during permitting. There'll, there'll be a new engineer on, on board to, to take care of those details.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go back again?
The sound wall.
The sound wall.
Is it, so what color is it?
Um, we'll pick a color that matches the brick is what my, so we'll, we can get that, we can get it made any color we want to. So I feel like matching the brick would, might be the best option, is what my initial intent is. So it would be here, and then come along here.
So the direction that you're opening the storage door is out towards the deck, right?
Yes.
And then you have your bathroom around the back.
Yes.
And, but you're also showing some planters. I feel like there's a kind of a narrow space to get through to their bathroom.
Yeah, we can move, we can move that, we can move those planters and shift that stuff around.
I'm, I'm curious if you wouldn't want to put your storage in the back, because that's sort of like the service area, and then your bathrooms to the front.
The, the storage will be closed 90% of the time. I always feel that when I'm at an event, I don't want to like walk out of the bathroom and everybody's like staring at me.
You could also put, and also put a privacy screen.
We can look, we can look at that. That's something we can easily look at, though. Sure, I'll talk to the owner to see.
I feel like the, the service should be towards the back and the bathroom.
It's something we can address simply, yeah, absolutely. Any other comments on the plan, or you want me to move on, or? I think I went through most of your stuff, then. Uh, counting on one. 22? Am I gonna go fast? Oh, four, six, eight, 28. On the perimeter. I mean, 22, and then we have the smaller ones in the middle.
I'd have to mention the height. I know, I thought that was the height.
Yeah, I can see that, but 36, I believe.
Yeah, it's, uh, 48 inches high.
48, yeah. So they're, they're basically level with the top of the masonry part of the parapet.
And so you were talking about, you're anticipating like taller plant materials in there?
Stuff that grows a little taller, a couple of feet, nothing like.
So we'd like to kind of screen it in to kind of get more.
A little, a little bit of a buffer, more intimate space out there. Mm-hmm, exactly.
For people that still get, still have the view.
Where are the views, like essentially, how's somebody gonna get that?
So we still have, I mean, there's still view, like, this is where they have the, uh, this location is, um, like the, the pots, the urns, so those areas are, are open. We have another space over here, uh, that is open, and then we have another space over here, a large space. Uh, this is probably 15, 20 feet. That is open. This is where another urn is. So those spaces remain open. Um, I mean, the planters are not a fixed number. They're loose, so we, we, I mean, if you feel that, maybe we're, do we need planters?
If this is still an observation deck, I feel like you want some clear and abundant opportunities for observation and use.
Okay, I don't think client will have a problem.
I think planters are kind of at cross purposes for that.
Yeah, you're trying to get a little.
I'm wild about the idea. I don't know how you guys.
I think the planters are fine.
The quantity, I don't think we'll have a little bit of shade and wind.
But I think maybe some well-placed, some well-placed relief.
I, I, I think the point is to just, um, not have like a, yes, like a barren behind the parapet, right? You don't want to just see at the, stare at the parapet if you're sitting down. So when you're sitting down at a table, you're not necessarily standing up looking out, that you want to have some buffer along the parapet a little bit. But we also, like you said, want to create opportunity to, you know, be able to see, so there's, there's a balance.
One of the nice things about the watermark is the ability to sit along that wall and drink and look out at the boardwalk, so, so, I mean,
Okay.
the observation is a key element as well, not just, um.
Yeah, I, I echo that sentiment, Rick, is that the edge wall might actually be the 100% corner, and the interior space might want to be more planted.
We, well, yeah, exactly. And we can maybe these, we could have still these, which these could just be more like flowers and, you know, stuff that's low and colorful, and then maybe, uh, possibly on, like you said, the southwest side that is more of a view towards the residential, we can have some of the taller things. But, you know, that's something we can discuss. Yeah, no problem.
I was, I was actually thinking, because the same, um, I actually like the fact that there is a large amount, because the landscape architecture perspective, when there's more, like, I feel like often people just stick a few planters, and it, it doesn't really, it's not just, it's not substantial enough. I was wondering about that. Do they all have to be that height? Like, are they very in height?
Yes.
Because that might solve those issues.
It might, I mean, this is just an aside, but it also might be beneficial to kind of use it to create spaces within the roof there, instead of just wanting big open space.
Seems like you actually want to develop a round.
It's just gonna be mobile anyway.
Those are things that we can look at for sure.
Okay.
So this next sheet here is the proposed lighting. Um, so originally, once in the TRC meeting, we had more of like, uh, light poles, which didn't go over very well, as expected, so.
Very well.
We went back to the drawing board on that, you know? And, uh, what we came up with are these, uh, perimeter fixtures, um, that are low bollards. So they're, they'll be below the parapet height, so they won't be visible from the ground at all. And, and those, they circulate around the perimeter. We do have a couple, um, uh, uh, wall-mounted fixtures that are higher for above like entrance doors and kind of like, uh, pathway lighting that shine here. Uh, one, two, three fixtures for the exit stairs, and then we have two more. Those are just for like, when people are moving, they're coming out to the roof, you want to provide a good amount of light, um, to get people to the area where the bar is and the seating area. And then once you get to this open field, it kind of steps down in lighting, uh, to be more intimate, uh, is the idea. And then along the, um, on the face of the, uh, the screen wall itself, we'll be, on the post, we'll mount some fixtures that face down and into the space. And then, uh, in the bar ceiling, we'll just have some simple recessed, uh, mounted LED lights that just shine directly down over the bar. Um, I can pull up those fixtures for you.
Are they dark sky certified?
Excuse me?
Are they dark sky certified?
Well, they're showing, they're, they're, everything's shining down. So like the ones that are out along the floor, they're, they're two feet off the ground. So there, there would be no light protruding up out of them, so. So this is the ones that would be over, over, like, over the egress doors and the access door out of the elevator, a really clean, simple fixture. Um, and then the other, the main fixture that we have is, uh, this bangle light. How the image pops up? So really, this is a really, it's a wide fixture that's meant to just kick the light out along, along the ground.
So that's the baller type line you're talking about?
That's a baller top light, yeah. There's different ways of mounting it. Uh, I know Donna had a question about how we mount it. We're able to face mount it on the parapet, and then we'll have some that we'll have to build pedestals for, uh, to get it to the proper elevation. There is, I guess we could talk about that now, some of the comments about the unevenness of.
If you consider, um, a different type of fixture that throws more light. If you consider a different type of fixture that throws more light just on the surface, like at 2027?
Okay.
On some of the terraces, we had, uh, the applicant had proposed light fixtures that pretty much just wash the floor.
Yeah.
They mount on the perimeter, kind of like just a, you know.
More like a linear bar?
Yeah.
Okay.
It just washes the floor, that way you're not getting, you know, some casting down or, you know, being in the way of, you know, whatever mounting height problems you might have.
Okay. We can look at that. I mean, the idea is that just, you know, we can look at all.
Between the plantar grounds and the table, it might be better off with several of them, right?
So this, so it's going to be the, say the parapet, then it's the planter, then these bollards are on the other side of the planter?
Yes, yes, exactly. Well, we, we can review that and work with Donna on, you know, an alternative light. I mean, I think the main objective of what we're doing is there's not going to be any lights above that parapet around there, so everything's going to be low on the ground and shining out. So there'll be no spillage outside the perimeter of the roof area, as I think was everybody, the main intent that we all want is not to look up from the ground and see a bunch of lights. So that's, that's the idea.
And there, there won't be any lighting on top of the bar via roof of the bar? It's just going to be mounted?
Yes, yeah, yeah, just, yeah.
No like name sign?
No, nothing like that, no. So there are, there are some existing lights inside the parapet. We'll be replacing those with these. And I know that the, there are other lights on the exterior of the building that exist that we don't intend to change. I know there's some accent lighting on the turret, I believe.
There's some security light on the outside, maybe it's going to get swapped out with this light style or?
On the outside, yes, over where the entrance door is. But there are, I know there's, there's some lights on the corner that shine down onto the, the drop-off area that we're not touching those.
Where are the lights going to be mounted on the wall, on the sound wall?
Just so the sound walls, they're, basically what the sound wall is, it's a, it's like a steel I-beam like post, and then these things just slide into it. So on that steel post, we can run the conduit and mount them right on, on the surface.
And how high will they be up there?
Um, they'd be the same as, as these. We can mount them four, four feet, three feet off the ground.
How tall is the sound wall?
Eight feet.
So all of the, all of these mounting heights that you're showing on the plan are all relative to the, the top of the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So the bollards will be mounted, they'll be stationary, right?
Correct.
The planters will be?
Well, we weren't, we weren't planning on the planters being mobile, so.
Oh, they're not, so they're going to be stationed?
They were stationary, but we'll, we can revisit that. If we do decide to do mobile, we might find another way to organize the lights, but.
You just said that the planters are stationary?
We planned them to be stationary, yes.
Didn't you testify a little while ago, or maybe it was the, the other fellow, who testified that they're movable so you can get behind them and to clean the, uh, the glass wall behind the, above the parapet?
Uh, if you said that, I missed it, but my intent was that they're be stationary and we can easily, we can easily move them into a location where we can provide space for people to walk around behind them to, to access the parapet to clean it. It's not an issue.
Well, which, which is it going to be?
I, my, my design has stationary.
Okay. And while we're talking about it, can you give me the dimensions and the number?
Um, I, I believe we said there was twenty-two before.
Twenty-two along the perimeter?
Yep. And I had two, four, six in the middle. I'm trying to go back to my plan, hold on a second. And then the dimensions, the size of the planters labeled on the plan. Sorry, I don't know off the top of my head. So these are thirty-six, forty-eight high, they're thirty-six inch deep, ninety-six inches long. And then we, and then we have some that are thirty-six by seventy-two.
It's, it's mislabeled. It's HDH, not LDH.
Oh, you're right. That is a mislabel, that's correct. Yeah, that's not, it should be an L, not an H.
Right, no, I knew that, but I didn't know they were that long.
Yeah, they're, they're, I mean, they're not concrete, they're fiberglass, yeah, they're fiberglass.
It's a big space.
And some are seventy-two.
It'd be hard to make those, uh, mobile.
Yeah, yeah, they're really not meant to be mobile.
You can't really move around.
And, and those planters are what you're proposing in lieu of what the TCR said they wanted, correct?
The, yeah, we're not proposing a green roof, that's correct.
So can you support that much weight with those planters? That's a lot of wood.
Yeah, it's important enough to stay on the perimeter. So they're not in the middle of the span. This is a steel and a low-bearing building, so, um, we're right towards the edge there.
I have a couple of questions.
Rick? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You and Eric gave some discussion about creating more, we'll call them view quarters.
Yes.
More viewable numbers. And is it consistent with the type of planters that you're going to have that are stationary? That you can design them and locate them to accommodate the request or the outcome of that discussion?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Now, if you move them to the interior, will you then put more weight on the non-low-bearing walls? I know nothing about it.
Yeah, well, we, well, I, I can't answer that specifically myself. Obviously, we're going to have an engineer that's involved in the project when we permit it. So whatever we do, it's going to, we're going to make sure.
You feel it's doable though to accomplish the goal that you already kind of established? Create more open view?
Yes, I, I feel like we're actually going to end up reducing the amount of planer boxes, so.
Planters should be used to shield the exhaust from the deck, like there's these two exhaust towers.
So I want to make sure that what you're saying is consistent with the discussion.
What's the spacing between the planters?
Uh.
And then between the planter and the parapet?
I, I, right now graphically, I'm showing roughly about probably two feet in between each one, somewhere around there. I don't have a specific dimension, but.
And again, you can vary the height, so you're not, it's not like a wall.
Yeah, we can.
It can still have a nice effect to have substantial planters that are different heights.
Mm-hmm.
Consistent with all these comments, you also mentioned you worked with Donna.
Yeah.
So essentially, assuming this, this gets approved, one of the conditions of approval would be to submit revised plans, showing the location of the planters, elevations and so on, to go over with Donna to come to some resolution that makes design sense? Is that, is that, is that?
I, I believe I understand the intent of like, of the board to, you know, use the planters in a way to provide some green, uh, buffering, but at the same time, we want to make sure we have, maintain our views. So I think that intent is possible.
You understand what Jennifer's point is and Eric's point has been and Jim's point is?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's fine.
So let me, um, ask the board members, since that seems like a lot for me to decide for you. I want to suggest that, um, we advise the applicant that perhaps they come up with a plant design that is not permanently fixed, has some ability to move about, that they can use different height and even with overall dimension sizes, some squares, some rectangles.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that they can be grouped or arranged to either provide accents, uh, create.
Shape the space with it a little bit.
Right, make, place make, they're, they're rooftop with planting. And then, uh, I'm also going to suggest that we not go with, um, you know, shrug materials, we stick more with grasses, varnials, annual flowers, so that they want to have such a high demand for soil, which will make them lighter, so that they are movable and, and arrangeable and will give them more flexibility, more, um, serving their clients. You know, if you're wedding, they may want to have a certain color. If you're having some other type of event, they want to have different accent colors that will help them sell the space and make more desirable seating.
So my client just gave, I just looked at him and he shook his head yes, so I put that on the record.
Well, that's great, but is that what the board feels? Or is the board more inclined to say, no, we want this perimeter, we want to have this more solid feel with vertical or more green rather than colored?
I think as long as it's safe, I think as long as it's safe, it's, um, should be, it should provide them the most flexibility to shape the space to the needs, but maintaining certain views and, you know, within the structural limits of the space.
That's my concern, I mean, if you're moving, asking them to move planters around there, fairly heavy, how does that impact, you know, if they're in the middle of the person, the perimeter?
Planters, we can go soilless, there's all kinds of medium that they can use. You know, when they don't have to survive over winter, no. Make them more flexible.
Okay.
Not be such a load issue for the roof.
I would advocate for, um, actually a combination of that because I think there should be some that are structured and set, because you don't, operationally, you don't want to be switching things out constantly unless that's like a thing that the client wants to do, but, um, but to have some flexibility. But I think you want to have some substantial planters that are there.
Mm-hmm.
And planters are really, have maintenance, but, um, I mean, it's fine, I need to lose a few of them, but I, I wouldn't go all the way to having these like smaller, um, too small. I mean, I think it's fine to have some smaller, but I think some substantial ones that make it feel like a place, you know, so I think it's got to be.
There are some opportunities on the roof. There are these exhaust build-outs that you could put the struc, the more structured things around, right?
Right, screen the entrance, screen.
Exactly.
The actual bar area.
And I agree that, you know, we shouldn't go the other, pendulum should not swing all the way to the other direction, you know, too much.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, when you're looking at these planters, there's no requirement that the soil has to be four foot deep. You can certainly put a false bottom in and, uh, you know, if you're planting annuals that are going to be, uh, fifteen inches tall, you don't need four foot of soil. Certainly get away with an awful lot less than that, which will cut your weight.
Right, but as part of the site plan approval, we want to see the design specification so that we know the stuff that's going to be structural or permanent will be designed to accommodate that.
I totally, I totally agree with you, Donna. We want to know what is being proposed. I'm just making an observation as to, uh, solve some of the problems that we're, we're talking about.
They're going to give us back a plan?
So they have to come back and hold the discussion?
A hundred percent.
Would they have to come back before us with these revised?
Yeah, they're going to give us back a plan with this design, based on the comments, Dan.
Well, for resolution compliance or for them?
Well, for me being able to draft and us putting this into words, you know, we can talk all we want, I got to create something that is, is guiding.
But that's, that's the question I'm asking. So are they coming back to the board to you or are they coming to?
Well, it seems like we're all in agreement, so why have another meeting and somebody agree to?
That's fine, just to be clear of what we're asking them to do.
I get it.
So and then we'll just leave it to Donna, so?
That's right, I'm putting it right in Donna's mind.
Thank you, Donna.
That's why I want to clarify.
Okay. Yeah, I think you have a feel for what it is, we're.
And comments, certainly comments, when you get the resolution, just give me your comments.
Okay.
I'll tailor it.
I think I hit most of the comments and the reports. I, I tried to hit all the points that are in there, so I guess if I miss something, I'm going through them now.
Uh, a couple of quick things. So no additional metering or mechanical equipment proposed?
No, it's all under the base building utilities.
Okay. And the existing utilities, um, have adequate capacity to handle the new demand?
Yeah, we'll put a, a letter from an engineer in, in, uh, we'll need one for our permitting anyway when we file for building permits.
I do have a question. Um, so this came up with Mr. Manzol System, like related to the sun sales, the possibility of putting sun sales out?
Okay.
So, um, I mean, have y'all given that thought? Is that something that y'all, you know, tossing around?
Well, I guess what I'll do is, uh, I can look at what they have now. I haven't, I haven't personally seen it up myself.
That's a site that I don't even know if it's sun sales, we got to see them.
Yeah, but that's, as people keep on saying, TRC, 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 TRC says no sales.
Oh, so they always, that's what I'm going to address by TRC?
Yeah, they said no sales.
Oh, they did?
I believe I read that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think Michelle was pretty much saying what we said at the TRC. I'm not so sure that that's a requirement. We didn't have a discussion. I just think we said that, you know, at that time, we weren't, we didn't say we're going to have sun sales. Really, we're saying we didn't, we weren't going to use umbrellas because they fly off the roof and.
Yeah.
Impale somebody.
That'd be something more permanent.
So we, we didn't.
It says there's no proposal for shade structures or umbrellas as part of the TRC.
So if they decide at some point they want to do it, they would have to come back before us to get approved to do that?
No, when I said it's correct, is we didn't have, uh.
Right.
We didn't have a proposal.
So, so my question is.
I mean, if they, if they wanted to put up a shade structure after the fact, that's not a threshold item to a site plan review? It's, it's not.
It's not, okay.
Okay.
I'll take you up for it. I just want to make sure we covered all points and that we're not being lax or irresponsible.
So it's up to you guys whether you feel it should be shade structures or no shade structures as part of your site plan?
But, I mean, no, if TR, it was addressed with TRC and they were fine with that, so, with me.
Okay.
Maybe further testimony?
Uh, I do not.
One more thing about, so there's the structural analysis. You mentioned there was like a current, there's a current letter for the building for occupancy on the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
I can, we can provide that to you.
Okay, and then a new one will be performed as part of building department review and?
Uh, because we'll have to, we have to tie the roof and we have to, with the, the new roof over the bar, and then we have obviously wind loads based on the screen wall, so there'll be a new report or new, actually plans with details that'll be filed during building permitting.
Okay, well, since you're talking about the loading at this point, you've got a plan that indicates 176 seats. Which 26 are you going to eliminate?
Well, well, the, it's meant to be a flexible space, so I mean, we'll just eliminate the amount of seats shown on the plan, but it's really going to be held and, by the operations and posted on the building, the limit of, I mean, sometimes there can be 20 seats out there, but the max there can be is 150.
But you have, you show us a layout, which is 176, so are you going to just eliminate at random? Is that what your intent?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll eliminate the seating that is over on the plan, that's correct. So the revised plan will show 150.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, maybe we should go through the inside report? The, uh.
Well, if, if the issues have been addressed, there's no reason to go through.
Well, there's under the zoning review, there were a couple of things.
Under zoning review from inside?
Because it says the first of the board plan, but there are a couple of things related to the testimony. Uh, the proposed roof expansion will have on parking supply and demand for the subject property?
Those are really not within the province of inside of all due respect. Those are within the province of the planner. The planner addressed the parking reforms that there are not.
Okay.
Sorry, Donna.
That's okay.
I think that's fair. Is there anything else?
I think the planning report also says, Jack, that it's covered by, uh, what a front redevelopment plan isn't.
Well, that's, the I planer doesn't agree with you.
I want to find the section of the plan that you think it says. I, I've tried to pull it up and, and comb through it. I'm not seeing anything that tells me that.
It may be treated in a certain way, but I don't think it's certainly exempt.
There are some statements about it's not scheduled for acquisition. It's not supposed to be selected for acquisition. Uh, and, you know, there's the section about, you know, cutting through the right of way to make connection, uh, to Ocean Avenue, you know, which is, uh, but, uh, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything to the document that says the plan doesn't actually apply to, to the hotel.
If it didn't apply to the hotel, it wouldn't have gone to the TRC. If this was exempt, completely exempt from the waterfront redevelopment, the TRC would have jurisdiction on it.
And the government body would not?
And they wouldn't have needed an SDF?
Exactly.
I mean, I hope.
Yeah. So it's.
Look, somebody would have picked the fuck up.
It may be treated specifically within the plan, that I'm sure it is, but it's not exempt. At least not to my knowledge.
I, like I said, I, I opened up, I have the copy of the, the plan open on my computer right now. I know there were amendments in 2018 that clarified a bunch of things about block numbers and, um, you know, the, the need for minimum block size and, and things like that, but. I don't have access to that 2018 amendment.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of other discrepancies.[1779.41] Yeah, I have a couple of other discrepancies, uh, I think your testimony was that the parapet walls are four foot, are you going to add an 18 inch glass wall?
That's existing.
That's existing.
Okay, the TRC report says that there's the current, uh, there is currently a 42 inch high parapet and a four foot high glass wall, which is correct.
My, my testimony was correct, and I actually double checked the detail, I have the original plans provided, I'm not going, I don't need to show you, but, um, I have the original plans from when they permitted this, and the numbers I gave you are the correct heights.
Okay. The, uh, the utilities, uh, that your, your, the utilities are there now, correct?
Correct.
You have a sewer line that is capable, you have all the size?
That's correct.
For all the service you need? Okay. You answer my question about the planters? Okay. Just answered a question on the parking. Okay, you said that the, uh, the roof on the bar is the, it's the 11 foot dimension rather than the seven foot?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And that you're proposing, at this point, you're proposing no coverage except at the bar?
That's correct.
When you did your calculations concerning the lighting, uh, did you take into account the existing lighting on the roof now, and how are you going to handle that if, any, any treatment to that?
So there's, there's existing lightings along the interior of the parapet now that we are going to remove and replace, so we're replacing the lighting that's associated with this area, now there are other lights on the exterior of the building in other parts that we don't intend to touch, but the lighting that is concerning the observation area where the pavers are, that lighting will be replaced.
On the, your central tower, where your, your elevator shaft is, there is existing lighting on that, uh, I guess only a quarter of that, or half of it shines on this area, are you going to do anything with that at all?
Uh, I need, I, I think there's, I have to look at that lighting, um, we're providing lighting over the door for egress, I know there's some higher lights, so we don't intend on replacing those, they're up probably, I don't know how high they are, but they're pretty high up there. We didn't plan on, on, on touching those. But we can look at that, I don't, we didn't plan on doing it.
Dan, were you talking about the accent lighting on the tower?
There's like three or four fixtures that are probably like 15 feet up?
Yeah.
Yeah, those.
I think we're talking more about, there's some security floodlights that are on the, the tower, that are more to, you know, within a 10 foot range of point down.
Yeah, we'll replace those, yes, anything that has to do with egress and.
I'm asking, in the totality of the lighting, are these things being considered, and so how are you handling that, that's my question.
Well, we will be replacing them, yeah.
Okay.
But we do want him to give us a new photometric when he figures out the, between the, the planters, possibly Bollard's style, so he's going to more uniformly, uh, spread the light in that seating area, so we don't have those hot spots.
Or, or the dim spots.
Or the dim spots, that's correct.
All right. I think that's all my questions. Anyone else? Any questions from the public?
Again, Ralph Mitchley, excuse me, 1501 Ocean, um, sir, I'm directly to the north of this, North Beach complex, um, this is the first I'm hearing about an opaque, is it, is the wall opaque that you're playing, opening up the sound barrier?
It's solid, yes, it's a solid wall.
Okay, well, glass can be solid, my question is, is it opaque?
Yes, it's opaque, you cannot see through it.
Okay, so there won't be any lighting that will shine from there down to the, to the door?
No, all the lighting is, will be on the inside of it towards the, uh, the event space, there'll be no lighting on your, on your side of the bar.
And is that go completely from the floor, as I heard, up to eight feet?
That's correct.
So there's not even an opening at the floor level?
Uh, it might be a, a few inches, based on the detail.
Okay. Not clear, there seemed to be a lot of testimony about the parapet wall and the glass wall that's above that?
Yes.
What is the, what is the final height going to be of that glass wall?
It's five foot six.
That's what I thought I'd heard, so.
Yeah.
But just a minute ago, I heard four feet plus four feet.
No, no, I, I corrected him on that, it's, it's four feet plus another foot and a half of glass on that, that's existing, we're not changing it.
Okay. The planters all around the perimeter?
Yes.
Correct, how high are the planters?
Some of them are, are 48 inches, but I think as we spoke, we're going to revisit that and there'll be multiples, but no planter will be above the existing measuring pad.
Okay, so there'd be about four feet up? My concern is, what would prevent people from standing on those planters, especially if you have a large crowd, and especially along the southeast perimeter, the observation that you have been talking about, what's to prevent people from standing on the planters, children even, and potentially going over a five foot six wall?
Is that something we can look at?
You don't see a potential danger there?
Well, there's, there's, there's operational things that need to take place in that regard, but.
I'm not sure what that means.
Well, as we don't anticipate people climbing.
Nobody does, that's the point.
Okay, it's something to consider, that we will look at.
Yeah, I, I think you're, I think you're creating a major hazard around the entire perimeter, unless that wall's a lot higher than five foot six.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
A, uh, one question for you. Oh, yeah, Mike Goonan, 1101 Ocean Avenue.
Great, thanks.
Um, so that's sound wall to the north, previously you had said there was an egress pathway to the second stairwell?
Yes.
How is that going to work, are people still going to be able to access that egress?
Well, we have to put a man door, like a, like a solid steel door that is framed with a panic device?
Okay.
That would, you know, if you hit it, alarm, it would be a local, usually be a local, like a store, you'll have a local alarm, so if someone hit that, it would have sounded a alarm, so that door will be locked at all times, it will only be open event, if there's an event at the building.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, comments now? Uh, no, any more witnesses?
We do have sound.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, there's more.
Yeah, yeah. About the sound guy.
I forgot about that, that's the biggest one. Sorry about that. Uh, we have a request for a five minute break. Like, have to make a motion to that?
Yes, for a five minute break.
Make a motion.
Sure.
Thank you. Call the paper.
Aye.
Thank you, five minute break starting now.
Everyone? Ready to resume our meeting?
Around the corner, there's a little like.
I read your take roll.
Thank you, everyone, Amy Levin, Tia, Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Al Clayton.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Soder.
Here.
Uh, Ari Delpo.
Here.
And Rick Lever.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to call Norman Doty, P E, um, our acoustic engineer.
Sir, please raise your right hand, so I'm going to swear the testimony about giving this back, we could choose, we could nothing but choose.
I do.
Please state your name from the record and spell it forth.
Norman Doty, D O T T I.
Thank you.
Now, Norm, you have reviewed the, uh, the acoustic characteristics of this rooftop, and you have recommended that certain conditions be met or implemented to keep the, um, um, sound from impacting the adjoining properties, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you?
We need to do credentials.
Oh, I'm, yeah.
I was just going to interject.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was waiting for the right comment.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, Jack, I'm sorry, Norm, so, um, Mr. Doty, would you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications, I'm sorry?
Sure, uh, again, I'm Norman Doty, I'm principal of Russell Acoustics, Point Pleasant, I've been a consulting acoustical engineer for, this is my 50th year now, I'm a licensed professional engineer in multiple states, uh, I'm a, an appointed member of the New Jersey State Noise Control Council that writes the noise regulations for NJDEP, I've done classified work in acoustics for the Department of Defense, I've testified as an expert in acoustics at local boards, municipal courts, county, state, and federal courts in New Jersey as an expert in acoustics.
I would offer Mr. Doty as an expert in acoustics.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, um, Norm, do I need to go through that preliminary, uh, again, you studied the acoustic characteristics of this roof, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And you, uh, recommended, um, certain, um, um, conditions that would limit the sound, is that correct?
Control it, yes.
Control it, and what were, what did you recommend on this?
Well, I, back a little over a year ago at the TRC meeting, I had presented some basic findings there, and I was asked to do a more complete engineering study, uh, which, which is what I did, and that was put together in a, in a report, uh.
That's called a modeling?
We, that's the modeling that we did, yes, it's detailed calculations as compared to, on the back of a slide rule, calculations, um, we have done multiple bars, patio restaurants, outdoor venues with music, whether they're a fine restaurant or a beach bar, um, they can be controlled, we've done these successfully, but they need to have certain elements in them, uh, one thing is, is the loudspeakers, specifically the placement, uh, typically in a, and you're, you go into a, a beach bar in Belmar or something like that, and a band, a stage, they'll put a couple of big speakers up by it, and in order to fill the room, and if you use this room as example, if to my left, that was some sort of group playing music, and this is filled, this is the audience, we go back all the way across the room, in order for the people on my right to hear at a, a decent sound level, and the speakers are up on my left, it has to be much louder, whereas for somebody in the middle, it's significantly louder than it is in the back, and it's louder than I really need to have here, and closer and closer, so the solution, quite simply, is instead of a few big speakers up front, you use a lot of small speakers spread around the space, I've even done them where we've suspended it from the ceilings, so, uh, you have a room full of people doing something, like an exercise class, or I did one with a karate class, uh, we had speakers suspended around the space above them, so any given listener is much closer to a speaker than they are when you put everything on one end, so one of the things that we recommended, and that's in the design, and I used my analysis, was a, a spread of speakers, in fact, there, this particular space, there's 17 of them located around the room, they're all low mounted, they're all inward facing, the second thing is, that you need to have is control, uh, I cannot tell you how many times I've been at venues where a band's playing, and the manager goes over to the bandleer and says, please turn the volume down, the, the people are complaining that they can't hear each other talking at the tables, and the bandleer turns the volume down, and five minutes later, I'm under oath, I swear I've seen it, they walk over and they turn the volume up again, you can't have that, you have to have the control, so, the other thing that I recommended was in to have a house sound system, that means that the band, and, and frankly, there is no difference between piped in or canned music and live music, because everything by contract, mind you, gets run through the house sound system, they don't bring their speakers, if they have a drum set, they are electronic drums and so on, everything comes through the house sound system, and a key ingredient in the house sound system is what we call programmable limiter, I mean, the programmable part of it means that somebody with the right security access can get into this thing and set, among other things, some maximum sound level, and the only way to change that is to have the right security code and get into the thing, so usually not even managers at the facility have access to this thing, they can turn the volume up, they can certainly turn it down, but if you try and turn it up beyond a certain point, the knob will turn, but it doesn't get any louder, so programmable limiter prevents that from happening, and we, we've used those, we, we, that's what we always recommend, and they work, um, so with those two elements, you can have virtually anything, whether it's, uh, recorded music or a live group, and, and in this venue, I might add, my understanding is we're talking, if it, if it's even multiple musicians, it's a small group, it is, uh, cocktail patio type music, we're not talking, you know, rock, evil rock and roll kind of thing, um, so it doesn't matter, and, and I was, I heard a discussion earlier about limiting at 10 to 10 P M, we did our entire analysis predicated on the basis of, the issue is after 10 P M, which is when the lower limit for the state noise regulation kicks in, and so, the analysis was done based on the geometry, uh, the parapet walls, the sound wall, the speakers spread around the area, and I based it on a sound level of 85 d B A, one meter from the speakers, and if you do the math, either in the model or just on the, the back of your notebook, it very quickly turns out that the sound levels fall very quickly, and at the closest neighbors to this, this site, we're talking calculated levels down around 20, 30 d B A, you can't, they're so low, that given the ambient sounds that are out in this area with no music playing, you couldn't even measure those sounds.
Norm, can you put that into some kind of like layman's terms, 30 d B A, what, what does that mean, what do you hear?
You've probably never heard it that quiet. It, it, it's very quiet, round, now, interesting, I found interesting, after my report, my analysis was done, a report was issued, the, the city, I don't, assume you know this, went out and hired another consulting engineer, Louis Goodfriend and Associates, I, I know them, and they reviewed my report, and they agreed with my findings, they also took ambient sound measurements in the area, and concluded, and then, well, don't, trust me, the report speaks for itself, but what they said was, that the sound levels expected from this site are below what the ambient sound levels are out there now.
What, what does that mean?
That means you won't hear it, and, and it is well, tens of decibels below the permitted limit under your noise ordinance, which we have the same limits as the state ordinance, state regulation.
So do you find that there's going to be any impact or no impact on the neighbors?
No, no impact. What they're hearing now is louder from, from, from just what's going on around the ocean, you get down along the beach and you start making measurements of some of the beach bars, and you have to contend with waves in the ocean.
What kind of d B A do the waves kickoff, you know?
Depends how, are you in the water or on the shoreline?
That's why I don't ask questions if that's not, I don't know.
So, uh, this was designed, really, from the ground up to, to not just comply with the regulation, but to be a controllable thing, so it doesn't get out of hand, and, and that's always my, my statement, uh, if somebody says, well, what if it does, you have the fallback of, there's a state regulation in place, it's enforced, if you don't have an approved regulation and your own enforcement mechanism, anybody can call up the county, they are empowered by and paid by the state of New Jersey to enforce the regulation, and after 10 P M, they have to meet the 50 d B A nighttime criteria.
And not only that, but we have the agreement that we discussed earlier.
So that, that in the proverbial nutshell is what we did and what we found.
So do you know where these speakers would be placed?
In my, in my report, I showed them spaced around, they're all around the perimeter, 17 of them.
And how high are they, up, above the floor?
I don't remember the exact number, uh, they're sort of a table, a table height.
So, so these are in between the planters?
In between the planters and tables and sort of spread around the area, they're over by the, um, the, the famous sound wall in the bar area.
Do we have a copy of the report there?
Irina?
It was submitted, I.
Can we, can we pull up the report?
Yes, I am though.
Yes, I am done. No. What do you think?
Everyone should have a copy of the report.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
There are two, um, two, sorry, I forgot.
So I think you want this one, right?
Yeah, I have it here, on page, on page-
Was retained by the city to be, to look at it from the city's perspective.
On page three of my report, it says, "Figure one shows the hotel's rooftop with the speaker locations and directionality," we considered the directionality speakers as well. The three speakers on the back are seven feet, and the ones around the parapet are three feet, six inches above the patio floor.
Shall I say that again? Seven feet where?
On the, on the sound wall, which is eight feet high, there are three speakers there that are seven feet, and, and the rest of them are three-sixths.
Why are the speakers on the sound wall higher?
Because of where the people are standing.
Right.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Dotty.
Yes, sir.
You say you have 17 speakers, yet your report says there's 30 of them, which is incorrect.
Can you give me a reference there, please?
Page one, we find the paragraph.
Last paragraph.
Last paragraph.
I'm just drawing.
Yep. Wrong, wrong letter.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I was, I was looking at the wrong letter. This is a January 29th letter, last paragraph.
The, that report was actually rendered in reference to Mr. Dotty's review of the Asbury Hotel, and I think that's in reference to the Asbury Hotel's setup, they have 30.
Correct. I had, I was asked, after all we did, somebody said, "Well, why don't you just do what the Asbury did?" Of course, the Asbury's a different situation.
The request was, make it equal to or better than the Asbury.
Okay. So we have, not, the number of speakers aren't a big issue, but they have 30 and we're proposing 17. There are several, there are several differences. They too use, I, I looked at their audiovisual drawings, very nicely done drawings, they have also, they have the speakers spread around the space, as we, that's, that's good methodology. I did notice on the drawing that there were multiple locations where there were volume controls placed. I saw no reference to a programmable limiter of any sort. Now, they may have it, but it's not in the audiovisual drawings. Also, in their audiovisual drawings are the use of subwoofers, they're the, the, the speakers that make the low-frequency boom, boom, boom kind of stuff. We, we do not have subwoofers, and specifically said we aren't planning on having subwoofers. So in that regard, I think we did make it better.
And as if I recall, on the, on the Asbury, they directed their speakers to the interior of the building from their perimeter, and you're doing the same, correct?
Correct.
Anyone on the board have any questions? Any questions from the audience?
No question.
Finally.
I'm sorry, before we move on, let's enter this report and to, to, as you do it, Adrian.
Thank you.
Everyone, make sure that, make sure the previous, the, is it November? The July 16th, that's the one that actually has the diagram of the Berkeley.
Oh, so, so Adrian will be the 2021 report, Mr. Dotty. A4 will be-
January 29th.
2021.
2021. January 29th, 2021.
That's the Asbury.
A3.
A3 was the July 16th, 2020. And A4 would be January 29th, 2021.
You're on.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
So I read your report, thank you very much, and thank you to the board and everyone.
Can you give your name and address first, please?
Oh, I thought I did that. Ellen Muller, 1501 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I read your report, and in your report you do admit, or you stay here, that it's really not possible to determine what the impact would be to the neighboring residences without putting in sound receivers, and it would take many, many hours to do that. So I, I understand how you addressed the music, now you have the music and you add 150 people, will, will their, will they be directed their voice to the south and down? I mean, I think 150 people, 150 people make, you know, a little bit of noise, and I, I realize that that would take a lot of time for you to understand the impact. But here.
Wait, 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 you're, you gotta ask him, you already asked him a question. He has to answer the question.
Okay, the question.
You're gonna answer your own question, is what you're gonna do.
Well, I was gonna help him. In here.
You said something about- You said something about setting up monitors and it would be difficult, where, where in my report are you talking about?
It's in the first page, this third and fourth paragraph. Certainly possible to do these calculations, blah, 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 and the frequency of sound would take many, many hours to manually calculate this one scenario.
Ma'am, what we're, what I'm talking about there is, is doing the calculations, we did them in the model.
Okay.
That's how it's done, the computer model does all the calculations.
Okay, so can I ask the planning board, or also, so once this is set up, will we then also be looking at the sound levels in real time and no like?
Yes.
Okay, that, that is an issue. And here, we'll just give you what I hear inside my house, from your pool. Now you have a roof-
That right there, no, 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 you have to wait when I talk.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
Yes, and I'm the attorney, and I'm going to tell you that that noise is irrelevant to what is being proposed.
I think it's terribly relevant, because you're adding noise.
Well, I'm the attorney, and that's what I say, and you need to speak to the board, and the board will tell you whether they think it's relevant.
All I'm saying is you're going to be adding-
What is your ruling?
It's not relevant, because that's at the ground level, and this is a-
And, okay, so one other last thing, you know, you mentioned the state noise ordinances, Asbury Park has its own, and we have a nuisance, don't we have a nuisance ordinance? I know we do, and it can amplify noise, cannot be heard, not prohibited.
The applicable laws will be applied to this project.
Right, it's, well, just for your information, it's 100 feet from the source.
Now you're just- I was gonna say, you can, at the end of, at the end of this, there are time for comments, and you can make these comments at that time. This is just for questioning the, the witness. Are there any other questions? Anyone else on the board?
Just have one more question. If the system goes in as it is designed today, and there are still issues with no noise spillage, it can be tweaked.
Oh, yes, ma'am, and nor, and normally would be.
I have a quick question, too. You mentioned that you recommended a programmable noise limiter be implemented, has a decision been made if that is going to be implemented?
It's in, it's in you, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Yes, yes, it's gonna be implemented.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Albert Fack says, "Of course."
Okay, do you have any other questions? Okay, we can open it for public comment, maybe?
And witness can step down first.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so anxious to get to comments. Okay, already, I'm sorry, are there any other witnesses I should, I really am jumping the gun.
I'm sorry, no, no, we're, we're done.
Okay. So now we can open it for comments, do I need a motion for that?
Yes. Motion open for public comment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Henry, and a second by Alan Fack, in all in favor.
And it's for three-
And opposed.
Sorry, it's three minutes?
Yes, three minutes per person, please keep your comments relevant, please state your name and address, and then Mr. Surfing will swear you in. We seem to be missing our digital, our analog clause, so I'm just gonna put it up on the screen or five two, and we'll get that started.
Okay. First, first person?
Please raise your right hand. You solemn swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I didn't know I was giving testimony, but yes.
Yes, it's not, it's not, it's not pure, it's not public comment, it's the public portion, and it's actually your, your belief, you're gonna testify and give us what you think about this project, but you gotta tell the truth, which is why I put you on the record. So please state your name for the record.
Maggie Quentin, North Beach.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to ask the board to consider full-time residents who hear the noise, I happen to be in the courtyard, not even on the north side, but on the courtyard, and I hear the weddings that are inside, I hear them in my house, and I, of course, I hear the pool and everything, and this is gonna be a bar that's gonna be outside, and I would just like you to consider the people that live there, thank you.
I know.
Anyone else?
Again, Ralph Mitchley.
Please raise your right hand. You solemn swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and your address.
Ralph Mitchley, 1501 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
Earlier in tonight's testimony, there was discussion or inference to meetings that had occurred prior for noise issues between the council and the applicant, am I understanding that correct?
Can I answer?
There's some sort of letter or something?
Yeah, the, the process before it gets to the planning board for any application in the oceanfront area, is that it goes through the redevelopment agency, which is the mayor and council. So all applications, before they get here, they have to go through there to get greenlighted to come to us.
Okay.
So that's where, that's, that's what was meant, this is the planning board, they with the council.
So then there's an agreement that was reached, then, between the applicant and the city?
No, there is, there, yeah, there's a subsequent developers' agreement, there is requirements of the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, that the applicant has to comply with before they get to us.
Is that public someplace?
It's, it can be intended by the public, I've never been there because it's not the planning board, but it's certainly-
No, I mean, this letter that can, whatever the agreement is, is that on site someplace?
It's on the website, I believe, yes. Any, any, any correspondence between an applicant and a city agency, with a few exceptions, are public information.
Okay, now, can somebody summarize what that agreement is, and how will it be enforced for us residents?
No, there's no need for that. What it, what's going to happen is, is that the, the, any enforcement issues, let's say you live close by, and you hear a whole lot of loud noise coming from that upstairs, you have to make a call to the local police and or the county, and they are, they're responsible to enforce it.
The, the local police, city, city of Asbury Park?
Yeah, the, I believe that goes to police.
Yeah, the non-emergency number.
And then, if not, the gentleman that was testifying said that the county also has jurisdiction, so you would, your first stop would be called City Hall, tell them the notice is excessive, in your opinion, and they have to come down and check it out.
Well, tried that with the pool a couple times, nothing ever happened.
Well, I can't, we're, we're not an enforcement agency.
We feel a little impotent out here, we don't know what to do.
That's not us, that's, that's not, the, the planning board proves projects, enforcement is another part of the government, city government, we don't, we don't enforce that.
And the noise ordinance has times of the day.
Yes.
Can have noise at certain times and not at others.
Right, and my understanding, again, heard what Ellen said earlier, alluded to, was that there is a, a noise ordinance specifically in the city of Asbury Park.
That's correct.
We've had issues with the, well, besides the Berkeley, the, it's now called Seahorse, it was called something else before, because they had a, a band out on the beach, and, but they shut down at 10 o'clock, and all the canned music also stopped at 10 o'clock. And we're assuming that that's also gonna be the case for this particular application on the roof of the Berkeley, that they're gonna be shut down at 10 o'clock.
Well, they'd have to comply-
Is that fair as something?
Whatever the noise ordinance requires, they would have to comply with that.
Okay, well, you guys are the ordinance, so.
No, we're not, no, I can't, and that's what I just said to you, we're not the ordinance. Enforcement of the ordinance is another branch of the city government, we don't enforce the ordinances, that's not what we do.
All right, thank you.
We're not enforcement agencies.
Any other comments?
Sir, please raise your right hand. Sowm swear, testimony about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and your address.
Michael Goonin, 1101 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, in my opinion, I think, living on Ocean Avenue in the waterfront district, there's an expectation that it's gonna be a vibrant, active area, and I personally feel that any thoughtful activation of the waterfront area is welcome. Listening to this application, it does sound like a thoughtful activation of space. My biggest concern as a neighbor would be sound spillage, as, as it's for everybody, and so I'm actually really glad to hear that there is a, a sound plan in place, and that the city and the planning board are really considering this. My only other comment, take it or leave it, is about that bathroom. I personally, as a potential patron of this place, like a bathroom in the back where you can sneak in during a wedding, sneak out, but leave that, leave that as it is, I like that part, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion closed.
Can I get a motion to close public comment?
Move to close.
Second.
I have a motion by Alan Fack, and a second by Dr. Henry, all in favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? Public comment closed.
Okay. Can I get some thoughts from the board?
I've got a few comments. I, I'm having a little trouble with discrepancies between the testimony of the various involved parties here. Dealing with the food service, the original testimony was, "Well, we're not gonna serve meals, we're gonna serve light snacks," but in answer to a direct question, "Yeah, we might be serving dinners," which is it going to be? We don't know what the hours of operation are going to be. The bar will be open from 10, from noon to 10:00 p.m., four nights a week. There's a bunch of those questions that I'd love to hear a definite answer, and, and yet I think it's a good project. I, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but I would love to have some more definite answers from the applicant, because it seems to be a lot of discrepancies, you know, I asked the architect about the parapet and the, the wall, he tells me what it's, what it's supposed to be, but the application says it's different, I take his word for it, but the whole seem, the whole thing seems to be very vague, and I wish it weren't.
As both a member of the planning board and of the TRC, who I will admit, we gave this application a very tough time because of our past experiences and the harassment we personally received because of noise from the, the Asbury Hotel, and each time- And, um, each time we challenged you, you came back and you made changes to the plan. And I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. And that in the end, you actually, as we requested, went, looked at the Asbury system, made a comparison, and you have done the work. So for that, I say thank you. And, and as understanding, if there's a problem with noise, we're gonna be all over you. But, uh, knowing that the system can be tweaked and you're willing to do it, I would, I would say thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else have comments?
The only comment is not really about the applicant, but it's everything in general. It's terrible. The gentleman left, I forget his name and, uh-
Mitchley.
Mitchley.
Yeah, Mr. Mitchley and Ellen and Maggie, I know. And they all have my number, they all have my email. If anybody hears any noise, any place in the city, twenty-four, seven, call the police immediately. Because again, the city handles liquor licenses once a year. We have so many complaints against an establishment, then we can take action against somebody's liquor license. And truthfully, you know, the Asbury came under new management this year, we got one complaint. And within a half hours, correct, and we haven't gotten another complaint because they respect the laws and, you know, this is somebody where they didn't have this gizmo that you guys have, turned something up. And so, but again, anybody hears any noise, call the police directly. That doesn't work. Call me, send me an email, Yvonne, the entire council. Because, you know, it's, it's unacceptable, it's a quality of life issue. And, uh, I thank the applicant, too, and like Yvonne said, we did put them through a wringer because we said equal to or better than the Asbury because of what we went through three to four years ago. We're an entire five of us, like every night we're getting like fifteen phone calls and, uh, the entire city was up in arms. I'm sorry, it got dragged out a little bit longer because we had, your, your expert was fantastic, but just to double check, we had had you pay for our expert. You paid for both of those. So, uh, it's appreciative and, uh, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
So-
If there's gonna, it sounds like there might be a motion to approve.
Yeah, so we have a number of, uh-
I gotta, I, let me give you what I have, okay? Uh, first, there's the usual WRA conditions about things. Trash, gotta address the trash to make sure that the TRC concern about the trash and receptacles be sturdy and so on and covered. Capacity of the facility will be at one fifty, not one seventy-six. Uh, that the capacity will be controlled and the, uh, patronage will be controlled by the use of one elevator system, a one elevator that links to the roof. And there will be security measures in effect throughout that system that will limit the amount of patronage to one fifty. I understood it that hors d'oeuvres and small plate type of food, like that's akin to the type of function that's being performed of, or having a pick and place up there, will be served. It's not like an ala carte dinners type of thing. Uh, the planters, we're going to, they're starting out at twenty-eight, uh, but they're going to be readdressed, by the architect.
Think it was twenty-two planters.
I'm sorry.
Think it was twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
It's twenty, it's twenty-two plus six in the middle is what they show.
Oh, okay.
So, and again, it may be that that's gonna change, but that, and there's the size, the elevations, the design and all that will change. And I'll have to go through that with everyone to create a proper condition.
Yeah, I, I, I made a raised eyebrow about the size of the planters.
No, I was gonna say, just, just, no, just because Donna's gonna be, Donna's gonna be the lead person, but I think Jen and Eric had the, some of the best ideas, so they created it, they figured it out.
Okay. Bathroom entrances, what's the story with that? Was there a comment about that that's gonna be changed with different location or something?
I don't know if there was a consensus.
Okay, that's one, okay.
Well, I feel like there was consensus at this end of the, where the service was supposed to be along the back wall and the, and the restroom, like all of the public functions should face the deck.
He didn't like that.
And he's a patron.
Mr. Goonin did not.
All right, well, I'll, I'll do what you tell me.
You guys.
Uh, the-
Was it there-
They were gonna review it.
About having one restroom?
No, that was, they, uh, that's, that evaporated.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the, the consideration of appropriate view quarters, that's what I'm calling them for this, my purposes, by the, uh, by the architect and designing this plan to be reviewed by Donna. And then, uh, the, the, uh, wall-mounted light fixtures, uh, just gonna make sure that the light is focused on the floor. And as Donna described it, it's sort of a splashing type of-
So I think it was a different kind of lighting versus the baller? Is that what it was, Donna?
Yeah, they may need to incorporate a different type of fixture to achieve the right level.
We'll put language in that you guys are gonna talk. You and the lady.
Okay, I come to an agreement.
And then, uh, something about photometrics. Donna, you said something about photometrics.
So you're gonna prove that to us with a new photometric?
And a new photometric. And that's what I have. I have ten, ten basic conditions.
That's it.
Jack, the, the lighting was also going to include the existing lighting when they do the photometrics?
Okay, yeah.
And I'd like something that Mr. Manz had testified about, or testified about, like, I know he'll do it, I like when he said, like, whenever somebody's up there, there will be eyes on them. So I think that should be like, you know, whenever public's up there, there's gotta be an employee, be a security or somebody.
Do you have a comment to that?
Keep in mind, if he talks too long, I gotta reopen. Why don't you talk to you, why don't you speak to your attorney and-
Yeah, let him, let him speak.
That's a good idea.
Somebody's gonna take a picture.
Yeah, we perform that.
There's a lot of things we take for sure down, common sense. You never know what's gonna happen, he's hanging on, but I don't know much longer.
I take him for, it's become so everybody, I take him for walks in a wagon, he rides in the wagon.
If you wanna change to only the hours that the bars are-
That's what we were just talking about.
Okay.
So we, um, when the bar's in operation, we'll have somebody up there, um, for security purposes.
Okay.
Got it.
That's the last one?
Yeah, when the bar's open, uh, building personnel will be there for security purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve the project that the, um, items listed, just discussed.
Second.
Yvonne, second.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Fagin?
Yes.
With that introduction.
You have to do everything with fanfare and like that.
That is very appropriate, very good.
Yes.
Jennifer Zoller? Eric Gallo?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. Lopper?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
When the bar opens, good going.
So, any other business? Can I get a motion adjourned?
Good luck.
Jim Henry, both?
Much success.
Second.
Jim?
Jim.
And Eric to second?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.